It's five thirty, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We appreciate your attendance and participation with us this evening. As you do come in, we would ask that you would take the time to sign the attendance roll at the back so that we can have an accurate record of those who were able to participate with us this evening. As many of you are aware, this meeting is a continuance of a meeting that was held last Tuesday evening as we are continuing to look at our budget and our certified tax rate for Utah County for the 2019 Utah County budget. First off, on behalf of the Commissioners, I do again wish to express our thanks for your participation and the public engagement in this process. I would like personally to thank the two Commissioners for the opportunity to continue this. As I mentioned in the meeting last week, one of the things that I wanted to have the opportunity to do was have some town halls and to visit with the residents of the county more fully. Part of the reason I did this was Albert Einstein keenly observed that it's one thing to know, it's an entirely different thing to understand. And what I hoped through this process is that we could come to a greater understanding of the effects of a property tax increase on the citizens of this county and that the citizens of the county could understand why I and we as a Commission voted to go through this process of the truth in taxation. One of the things that I would like to hopefully help people understand maybe a little more fully is how truth in taxation works. Back in the early eighties, a wise bill was passed to essentially force government to live on a limited income, a fixed income. That meant as property valuations increased, the state would issue a certified tax rate that would adjust according to the property values so that government essentially lived on a fixed income. The new revenue that would come into government would have to come from new building growth and expansion, but your relative, what you were paying was to remain the same through that process. Anytime that government needed or felt the need to garnish more funds from property tax, they would have to go through a process called truth in taxation. For example, last year, we dropped the percentage or the rate that you were paying on your property taxes by six percent. This year, we are looking at changing that rate that was given to us by the state to a higher percentage so that we can potentially have more funds. Now ironically, if we hold the percentage the same, the county would get about 1.7 million in additional revenues. You would be paying the same percentage of value as you were last year, or we could raise that to a higher threshold. So why would we be considering that in the first place? And why don't we just cut, I think are very valid and important questions. To help you understand why we are considering that, I think it's important to understand the budgeting process we've gone through for the last couple of years. Every year, our clerk auditor office produces a tentative balanced budget. From that point, your other elected officials and department heads have the opportunity to come to the Commission and present the needs that they have that exceed that balanced budget based on our projected revenues. We as a Commission then have to go through those and determine if they are truly necessary. For the last two years, we've engaged in a process that I felt is very healthy and beneficial because we've had all of the department heads and elected officials make a presentation that's been recorded in a public forum of their needs. We've then sat down with those individuals and asked them to go through everybody's asks and come up with a priority ranking. Last year, we did that process and the final priority ranking left us budgeting into our reserve funds about seven million. Now, at this point in time, it looks like we will be able to return some of that fund balance back, but in the end, we will have drawn down on our reserves. When we started that process, there were a little over fourteen million in asks, so we cut that in half. This year, we saw a very, very similar function and process go forward. We had, I believe the rough number was around twelve to thirteen million in additional asks. We through that process have trimmed that down and identified seven to eight million dollars in true needs. It's important to note that Utah County as a taxing entity spends less per capita than any other urban county in the United States of America. The reason I share that with you is because I think it's important for us to understand that as your elected officials, not just as the Commission, but as the Sheriff, your Treasurer, and so forth, we're working very hard to keep Utah County government small, efficient, and operating appropriately. But we have faced increasing demands on our services because of the rapid growth in the county. We currently have about sixteen million dollars in unencumbered reserves. The state recommends that a good, healthy government keep between sixteen to twenty-five percent in that unencumbered reserve account. Now, for good fiscal management, we do have additional funds in our reserve account, but those funds are allocated primarily for reallocation to things like our vehicles, our cars, our building maintenance, to make sure that we are keeping up and keeping those things current and maintained without having to raise taxes all the time. Because we've been fiscally prudent in that manner, we are able to operate and replenish out of that reserve and keep our cushion and our barrier. If we are to budget, all of the additional asks that have been deemed necessary by your other elected officials and us as a Commission, that sixteen million dollars will dip below a percentage that the state has deemed healthy. As a result, I personally felt it was important for us to go through this truth in taxation process so that we could have the dialogue and conversation about where our county government's at, the demands that are being placed on it, and where we're going in the future. Now, if we take a long-term historical look, we see that budgets haven't flowed. There have been years, within the last ten years, that we've been able to contribute back into that fund, but the trend as of late has been to dip into our reserves and to dip into them heavily because of the rapidly expanding growth and demand on government services. Most studies will confirm that for every house that is built and dollar they bring into government, government ends up spending about a dollar twenty in providing services, and we're talking about essential services. Now, one of the things that's helped Utah County survive this long without having to go through that process is we're very wise in how we develop. We force development into the cities so that the cities generally provide those services like sewer and water and other things like that. And as a county, we try and stay out of that business, and we stay in the business of making sure that the criminals are in a jail where they're properly housed and kept out of harming society, that we have a healthy Sheriff's Department and Patrol Division, that we have a healthy Attorney's Division, that we have a constitutionally mandated division that looks after indigenous defense of those individuals charged with a crime so that they have access to a good quality lawyer who can defend them in those cases. We've made sure that our assessors and our recording offices are properly staffed so that we can keep accurate records and that we can properly assess your properties with qualified and skilled people, that our clerk and our elections divisions can run appropriately. Elections is a great example of an area of continued increased demand. As our populations grow, elections become more and more expensive to operate and manage. In fact, our new incoming county clerk has identified about 2.5 million dollars that she will need to keep our elections to a high standard so that you can exercise that right. She's been diligent and frugal already and already finding about a million dollars in grants, but that still leaves us about a million and a half short to bring us to that threshold. So these are examples of some of the demands that are being placed on the government and why I've gone through that process. As I've met specifically in emails and the town halls, and now I'm going to speak very personally for me, as I've gone through this process and met with people, one thing I've learned immensely is that the property tax process is very confusing and we need to do a better job of explaining it and helping people understand how it works. The second thing I've learned is that my proposal that I had originally suggested of freezing our certified rate, which would bring us about 1.7 million in additional revenues, was fairly well received once people understood all of the information. Now, one other thing I've noticed is there is about as many people who are adamantly opposed to any tax increase as there are people who are fully supportive of a twenty-plus percent tax increase. That number was pretty split, but of the people who said, "Ah, I could maybe get on board with freezing your rate," the vast majority of them said, "But I would prefer to wait and see if things turn around and if budgeting out of our reserves and fully funding what these people need can get them through and we can see if things improve." This has been something I have struggled with very much internally because I feel personally that not taking action puts us in a position that is financially very risky because it gets our reserves depleted pretty low. It gets us below a percentage to where I am feeling comfortable. But in the end, my job as your representative is to reflect your wishes, and my impression and understanding is that the wishes of the people of this county are to, again, budget into our reserves. Despite my reservations, I am willing to listen to the people on that. The reason I am willing to listen on that particular point is because in that conversation, many of those, even many of those who are adamantly opposed to tax increase have committed to fully supporting a higher tax increase next year if we find ourselves in the same financial position. And that is something that I personally, although I hope it's not true, would anticipate, but I fully count on those individuals to hold true to their word because I am willing tonight, hold true to my word to represent the wishes of the constituents of this county that entrusted me to be their representative. With that introduction from me, I will turn some time to the Board so that they can express and share their feelings. We will then turn to the agenda item. As we move into the agenda item, we will allow for public comment. At that time, when I open it for public comment, you're welcome to come to the podium and please state your name for the record, but again, I'll give some time now to my fellow Board members to allow them to express their feelings. I don't know who wants to...
Well, you went first last time, so I'll go this time, I guess. So I appreciate Commissioner Ivy's thoughts and words on that. I wasn't prepared to say this at the beginning, but one of you have asked me to give you my brief history on how we've gotten here, and Commissioner Ivy talked about part of the state law, how we got you here tonight. The Commission, again, Commissioner Ivy outlined that it was me who actually proposed an actually even higher rate, and both these gentlemen said, "No way, no way," and I said, "I'm not supporting that rate necessarily." What I've said was, "That rate will get you all here so we can have the government of the people and for the people that you want so you can come and speak to the service level you want." That's how we got here. Nobody that night, including myself, and it is on YouTube, said, "Oh yeah, we're going to raise your taxes twenty-seven point five eight," whatever that number, the high number, okay? Now, I will tell you, depending on how you think the government should go and stuff, that number is accurate if you want to continue to keep the exact amount of reserves that you have right now as a county. So if you want to raise the taxes that percentage, that would maintain the current reserve balance and allow for all of those things with growth. It doesn't mean that's how we have to do it. There are many ways to do this, like Commissioner Ivy was talking about, the budget increase have gone through. I have a hard time telling any of the other seven departments that have duly elected officials like myself who were elected through this process that I know more than them. For example, an elected sheriff, I don't have a law enforcement background. I have a law enforcement appreciation, and I know what they go through. The day I came in, they were in my portfolio. I went down there and Sheriff Tracy and his staff, they opened up the doors and let me learn and understand what they do and how they do it because I hit them with every question. When I campaigned, I beat up the jail for their food budget, and at the time, it was three and a half or four million dollars. And rather than calling me an idiot, they called me down and said, "We'd like to show you what we do." I went through, I learned, saw what they did, and when all of a sudden I said, "Well, why do we need to feed inmates prime rib?" That's what it felt like to me when I see this big number, and it is a big number. Three million dollars is nothing to sneeze at, but then when you realize that the jail is doing every meal for sixty-one cents a meal and doing a great job, and by the way, those are the same meals that we provide and give to our Meals on Wheels and to those that we need to take care of in this community, all of a sudden, it gives you a little different perspective, at least it did for me. So all of a sudden, I changed my tune and said, "Okay, sixty-one cents a meal is pretty good." I don't live on that in my home. I'd like to be able to do that, but I don't. The jail grows their own garden, uses their own food, does things like that, and those are the kind of leaders you have, and again, he's elected to do that. Then not only that, we have deputies that, you know, I hear people all the time, and I've questioned it, I've questioned it because I've heard you say it. These deputies take their cars home. Yes, they do, and heaven forbid if you had to find out how and why some of them do. I'm not saying there aren't days that maybe they don't need to, and again, we can argue over pennies, but we're talking about millions of dollars here, not pennies. But a lot of these people who are deputies that secure the jails or secure the courthouses also serve two duties. They're also your search and rescue. They're all of your response teams that if you have to call dispatch, we hope that you don't, but if you do, you'll be appreciative that their gear and their stuff is parked at their home rather than driving from Lehigh down to the Sheriff's Office in Spanish Fork and back up to Orem if that's where the emergency was, or because we have canyons here and things like that. So it's not always as easy as it looks, and so I encourage you to get to know it. It's not, I'm not speaking in an absolute, I'm not saying that's the case with everything, but that is a lot of the case and a lot of things going on. It's not that we can't do better, but that is one department that takes so much heat, so much heat, and that is the one department that also scrutinizes themselves all the time. Again, I'm not saying there aren't dollars to be saved anywhere. Heaven forbid there are dollars to be saved everywhere, but dollars are not millions, and that's not going to change with that little thing. We also have two different funds. I also have a hard time, and it's been the Commission's practice, and not just this Commission, it really hasn't been this, this was the practice coming into office, and that was you'd have elected officials and department heads come in and say, "I need this," and we all run for office, the reason you're all sitting here. Government's bloated. You don't know how to spend my dollars. My dollars are sacred and you're wasting my money. I have said every one of those words myself. You will never hear me utter those ever again when it comes to Utah County. Don't get me started on my school district, but on Utah County, you will never hear me say that, or my city, because I have a new appreciation for how and what those people do and what they do with every one of those dollars. They are overworked and underpaid servants of Utah County, of me. I live here, and I am excited to stand up here and am willing to go to bat for them and help you understand what they do every day that's so important. For example, some of the unfunded stuff that you've seen in the budget that a lot of you were frustrated, it's like, "Well, we don't know why this increase is here." I get it, I would be frustrated too. It's frustrating for the Commission because we can't talk about some of these items. We'd love to, but it's illegal and there's laws, and so there's certain things we can do, and we do it openly, and we do the best we can, but there's certain rules that we have to follow as well. But for example, one thing that's not continued in your budget, if we just maintain, and I hope the Farmer's Almanac is right, for example, this year, we are supposed to on the Farmer's Almanac, get a lot of moisture. A lot of moisture is something we need, but it also brings with it other problems that the county has to provide for, for example, mosquito abatement. If we just hold current to what we used this year with our low water year, we need a hundred and nine thousand, let me give you the exact number, one hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars to just maintain the current level of mosquito abatement. Now, we get calls all the time. "I'm at my daughter's soccer game. Why in the world do I have mosquitoes here? Why aren't you guys taking care of it?" Well, because we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, and so that's an example. That's a hundred and nine thousand to maintain what we have. As we continue to grow and expand, and Saratoga Springs gets bigger and Spanish Fork gets bigger, and we have all these new areas, those things changing and go with it because we demand those as a public. I don't know anybody here that says, "Please don't spray for mosquitoes." Yes, please allow those mosquitoes, those pesky things to go ahead and continue to spread disease, okay? For example, here's another thing that we do in the Health Department. The county partners with school districts. This is the one benefit I will give the school districts for, but I still don't think they do it well enough, and they provide school nurses in partnership, in most cases, with the county. If you take the twenty-five school nurses that we have and take the amount of money that the county spends and how many school kids we have in this county, your tax dollars pay for the protection of our most precious asset, in my opinion, and that's our kids and our future, two dollars and twenty-two cents a year per student to protect them from disease. I would spend far more to protect yours and my kids. I would, so that means we've got to look at other places to cut potentially, right? So then I go through and I look at places like the Surveyor. Well, I can't go there because his demands, his asks for his state mandated elected office is three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two additional dollars to protect your property rights, which is why we're all here, because we have defined property and we take that ownership sacred. You know, ones that I struggle with, the public defenders, and I mentioned it last week, one point three million dollars is his request to maintain and do what the state won't pay for and sticks the county with. That's a big bill. By the way, that's an increase of 1.3 million. We already spent several million dollars. Tom Means does a great job. I hate paying that. Quite honestly, I do. I wish the state would step up and part of that surplus or part of their responsibility, join the other forty-eight states, the other one being Michigan that's like us that doesn't do it, and fund and take care of the responsibility because they collect... and fund and take care of the responsibility, because they collect more taxes than anybody. And then the county wouldn't have to raise them. We could actually cut. Um, the, which brings me to my other point that Commissioner Ivy talked about. When we go through this process for truth in taxation, truth in taxation is only ever to raise taxes. I trust these two gentlemen, and the gentleman that's going to replace me, very much so, to know that if we were to even raise your taxes even one penny tonight, nobody said that we are, but if we did, that if that was a surplus, they would cut taxes. They don't need to hold a meeting to cut your taxes. They can do it on one meeting, on a commission and agenda, and most of us wouldn't even realize it. Okay? So I do trust them to do that. That's why we elect them. Um, some of the other things that are in there, uh, Public Works. We have state contracts that we have to fund for five hundred thousand dollars, roughly four hundred and fifty-one thousand, to be exact. Uh, let's see, our, our drug, uh, Department of Drug and Abuse, uh, Substance Abuse, they need three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to maintain the good work that those people do, okay? That's again, that's a service that the private industry doesn't provide, because insurances don't cover them. And if you've ever had the unfortunate, uh, circumstance like some of us have had with, with victims of drug abuse or substance abuse, like alcoholism, you know that's so expensive, and if you have to pay for that on your dime, and the county has people that are there to help, and it's still not enough. But again, that's, those are some of the things that we have. Uh, when you have a sheriff subdepartment, you obviously have attorneys, right? We s- we spend a lot of money in also protecting and putting away the people that I believe you guys expect us to do. So that gives you a little background, and that hopefully is what, uh, Robert asked me to do. Uh, but I, um, wanted to talk about specifically, and again, I, I'm only gonna call this Commissioner Ivy's plan, because we can't talk, and, and the way he said it, when he's talked about holding the rate. So I just wanted to illustrate to you guys what, and it's not really Commissioner Ivy's plan. I, that's just, for me, I need a label. Okay? So what I wanted to prepare for you is to show you what, instead of the twenty-seven point, uh, six percent that you all saw with the numbers on there, I wanted to show you exactly what we're talking about. If we were to hold the rate and have you pay the exact same percentage, okay? So for example, and most of us in this county all believe the same. We don't want governments to pick winners and losers. Well, guess what? We actually do. We do pick winners and losers. We pick winners and losers because we, as a society, have decided we do value certain things more than others. We abate taxes for our veterans. Thank heavens, we should. They put their life on the line for me, and if I had to pay double taxes for them, I'm more than willing, because I didn't serve and I couldn't, okay? We also give a discounted tax for farmers. Well, thank heavens, I don't have enough land to grow my own food and sustain my family. So we have put a value, and we can call it picking winners or losers, or a value to help them provide those services that we need to live. So again, I'm not demeaning. I'm actually appreciative of those programs. But what I want to talk about is if we hold the rate, for example, the average home, and the thing that you saw is a three hundred and forty-four thousand dollar average home. That's the a- the reason we have that number is that's the actual average number of value in Utah County. I, myself, actually live in an average home. These are all public record. You can go see on the website, and you can look me up and see where my home is. I actually am slightly less than this. But if we were to hold the rate, the average citizen per month, and again, holding the rate to what it is right now, would have an increase, and in here you'll see all seventy-four cents. Seventy-four cents a month is what your increase would be to fund the government the way we're currently funding it. For those of you that are like me and wanna do it all the way, I was too cheap to go and get enough coins to fill it up with eight dollars and eighty-nine cents annually. That's what that rate is, is holding the rate is eight dollars and eighty-nine cents annually. And I'm gonna stick all these in front, so you can all see it today. So you can also check my math. I heard last week a lot of complaints from people who own small businesses. Small businesses are the heartbeat of America. Without small businesses, we wouldn't be this great country. And on the backbones of those, I would hate to ever be the cause for putting a small business out of, out of business, okay? But a small business, by the way, that's out of your home, that's also worth three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, this is their monthly increase, it's one dollar and thirty-five cents, sixteen dollars and seventeen cents annually. I feel comfortable in raising the rate, knowing that there is no business that can be sustainable. If sixteen dollars is gonna put you out of business, you're already going out of business. So I feel comfortable in saying that. The next two are the ones that are hard, and everybody makes the arguments for, okay? This penny represents green belt. I live on a, roughly a quarter of an acre and have a value. Green belt, because again, you can't grow much on a half acre or a quarter acre. To meet the measurable standard for this tax increase, uh, holding the rate on which the green belt would, meaning the increase to our farmers, if you take two hundred and fifty times the square footage of my lot, then you would get this penny. So I feel like this penny for those several hundred acres is not going to hurt our farmers. And if it does, and it increases, then again, I trust these gentlemen to decrease that rate, so that we don't pay more at the grocery store. There's one more that I think, and it's always hard, because everybody says, I'm on a fixed income. I don't mean to be demeaning, but we need to characterize it the right way. We're technically, we're all on a fixed income. Whatever the money we have coming in is the regular money we have to live. So when I think we're talking fixed income, I think we need to refer and, and keep in mind, we're talking about generally people who have worked long enough and can't physically or work full-time for some reason. And so they have limited income, and it's controlled by somebody else and, and out of their control. That, that's disheartening to me. It, it, it's troublesome to me, because I have grandparents that are there. I lost grandparents who were there. I have parents who will soon be there and, and things like that, and so it's hard. But here's the other thing that's nice about our government, and the reason that some of us pay more taxes. We actually abate. This is how much the tax increase would be. And there were three people that came and spoke out last meeting, some of which were very nasty toward me, and that's okay. Some of them have said to me before, you know what? I pay your salary. I'm one of those people who have said, I pay taxes and I pay your salary. I'm that guy. I deserve every word that has ever come at me, because I've uttered those. But when you pay no taxes, you actually didn't. I am honored to pay property taxes for our veterans and those who can't afford to pay, and provide you the services, because you helped build this county and make it great for me to raise my family here. So if I have to pay a little bit more to provide those services for you while you don't pay any, because you've already paid your fair share, I'm honored. And so I wanted to put that up here, because we do have several people that also don't have to pay any property tax. So the reason I did this is because this meeting is called Truth in Taxation. Nobody wants to pay taxes at all. If I could live in a world where I never had to pay taxes, sign me up. But I think there's a difference between truth and taxation and I'm mad at the world, right? This isn't the federal government. We, we're not anything like the federal government. In fact, we're not the state. If the state were like Utah County, this would be an even better state. I will tell you that right now. We will never have to be the number one taxed county. We do it better, and we do it different than everybody, because we do have the cities that do it, okay? Uh, Commissioner Ivy's right, and, and the commissioners that came before us, as much as people have beat on them for, they should've done this the right way, I don't know what the right way is. Isn't building up a savings and not raising taxes the right way? Isn't that the Utah County way? Well, then they did it, the Utah County way. But now we're at that crossroads, where do we empty our savings account? We all go through this personally. We all start to dip into our savings for something at another time. The question is, do we replenish that savings, or do we just say, nah, life happened? And that's where this county's at, is a crossroads. And so for us to go through that in truth and taxation, we need to deal with real numbers. That's why I wanted to put that up here. I'm very willing to support that number. It's necessary. The reason is, is the other thing that happens with taxation. When we raise this rate, this isn't for your taxes that you just paid. This is for the collection at the end of November of twenty nineteen, which means these funds can't and won't be used until twenty twenty, okay? So the difference is, every time you raise the rate or adjust taxes, it takes you a whole other year. So somebody that moves into their home, January third, into Utah County in twenty nineteen, this is the unfortunate part of taxation, is we all pay, because we're already residents, we all pay for their services and everything in here, because they technically haven't contributed to any of the property taxes that are required for their services for your cities. And so that's why new growth doesn't cover a hundred percent. New growth does catch up, and, and right now, we're at about one point five million dollars in new growth. Withholding the rate, it will go up a little bit. And i- if we continue to grow like that, great, we'll have another million and a half, two million dollars every year, and we can have that judgment. If we don't have new growth, and we don't have to see, keep supplying these services, then great. These gentlemen will lower your taxes. I know they will. I've been in meetings with Commissioner Lee, where he's talked about lowering the rate on certain things. Now, the one that he wants to lower the rate on is one that kind of bothers me, not because he wants to lower the rate, it's the assessing and collecting fund. The assessing and collecting fund has a healthy balance of one point two million dollars. And this, to me, goes back to where the, the commissioners in the past, I, I think, may have bent off a little bit in the Utah County way of budgeting. Uh, but I wasn't there, but this is just my opinion on this. And that is, when you have elected officials, again, elected by you, the same way we all were, I don't know how one can put themselves above another. I, I've never cast a vote and said, yep, this one's more important, because actually, I think we have it backwards. The pre- the president's not the most important person in this country. My city council and my mayor and my school board is, because they control a lot more of my life than my county, than my state, and than my federal. And I think that's the problem, is we have a reverse where the federals think they do, and then on and on. But when you have an assessing and collecting fee, that is for the collection of all the taxes, the school boards, the, the school districts, uh, the cities and everybody, and we have to distribute that. Those are made up of your treasurer, your assessor, and your recorder, where you come to record your deeds and things like that. Every year, they have requested more money and more additional, uh, software and things like that to better serve you. Now again, they are servicing the whole county. They have been asking for needs to be met every year. And yet, we have over a million dollar balance in there, and they don't require near as much money, uh, to do that. But we keep saying no. We say no, I just think how to have it, because I, you know, it's like me as a father with my daughters. No. It's a reflex. It's no, rather than taking the time maybe to understand. The reality is, is if you're gonna elect somebody, and Commissioner Ivy mentioned, uh, Amelia, who, who's the clerk of order, she put in there two and a half million dollars is what we need for elections. Well, she was just elected. So again, if that's not the case, you know, I, I don't know what to do, because I'm here to tell you, two and a half million dollars is a huge amount, you know? But the cities refuse to do elections by themselves. They've started passing on the buck, and Utah County has become the collection point, where we start having to provide services for everybody. And that's kind of been how it was. We've been a good partner. Maybe the time is, if you guys don't want us to raise our taxes, is to shut off the cities and tell them, no. But I know what they'll do. They'll go and raise your taxes and say, well, the county's no longer providing it. So it's a catch-22. Somewhere, there's a balance that we all need to reach, where we say, this is the appropriate size of government. These are the services I want. So for example, the recorder, if you want him to be able to get down, and I'm telling you, Jeff Smith is a very smart man. In fact, all three of them in the assessing and collecting can tell you to the penny, how and what they need and why they do what they do. But if you wanna know, Jeff Smith will tell you. The reason I need another half-time or a full-time person is because when you're a property owner and, or a title company, and you come in to record your, your deeds, because of the growth, if I have one more person, I can meet my state mandated time of ten days or fourteen days, or whatever. But he can tell you how and why. To me, that's the Utah County way. Don't tell me you need more unless you can tell me how and why and what it does. And I'm here to tell you, I believe that every one of our department heads do that. And if they didn't, you would unelect them. And for the ones that aren't elected, this commission is their sole boss and can fire every one of them. So if we are so offended by how they've budgeted and think that they're not doing a good job, which they are, then we should fire them and take the action, because it is our responsibility to be accountable for those people.
All right. I'm gonna, I'll be short in my comments. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue with the Utah County way. Um, one thing I wanted to clarify, I'm not quite sure, Commissioner Graves, when you mentioned that I was, I wanted to reduce the ANC. I'm not sure where that comment comes from, but maybe we can talk about that afterwards. Um, going on with the, uh, the Utah County way, I, I enjoy, I love being here in this county, because we do it the Utah County way, and we're different. And I am glad that we're different in all the as- aspects of what we're trying to accomplish and with our, with our government here. There's, there's a couple of things I wanted, you know, after that meeting in truth and taxation, I had the assessor's office, some individuals in the assessor's office come into my office, and they said, there was a lot of things that were said there that were, that were wrong. And I said, yeah, I recognize that. There was a lot of misunderstanding, and probably on both sides, of misunderstanding of what happens with assessing and collecting, especially with the assessing of property, property taxes, property values. You know, when, when we have, uh, you know, the, the differences between the, the values and the rates, and we have a certified rate, which gives us a certain amount of money that we get, that's, that's gonna be there for a stable revenue source for the, for the government. And I get it. There's a lot. And I would be the first one to tell you, I am not an expert in that. I know, I, I ask a lot of questions, uh, about that. And so when I hear it here and there about individuals and they're, and, and they're talking about assessing and how their property values have been going up, and, and so on and so forth, it's complicated, and I get that. And so I think we do need to spend more time in talking about what we, what the values look like, where they come from, how they're mandated. One of the things that I wanted to talk about though, and I've, and I've said this over and over, and I wanna get just a little bit more information out there, is that currently, in our, in our fund balance, in our general fund balance, we have twenty-nine, or twenty-four point nine million dollars in our fund balance. In that twenty-four point nine million dollars that we have in that fund balance, and realize, this fund, this fund balance money is your money that we have already collected. It's sitting in a bank. It's not something that we've allocated. We have not said this is going here or there in the budget. This is money that we've put into re- into reserves. It's your money already collected. Of that twenty-four point nine million dollars, we, we have five percent, which is state mandatory, it says five percent of revenue is statutorily required of us to keep. That, that equates to three point six million dollars of that twenty-four. We have vehicle recapitalization in there at three million dollars. That's, again, we, that's our, our preference, if we wanted to spend that other than, but it seems like a good idea for us to keep that in there. When we replace vehicles, then we can go ahead and replenish them without it being a major hit to the budget. That's what that fund's for. Again, we don't have to leave it there. We choose to leave it there. There's six hundred thousand dollars, dollars, six hundred thousand dollars in there from substance abuse that we, that we've tagged for substance abuse. And we also have one million dollars in there for the twenty twenty presidential election. So when we're talking about monies that are going towards the elections, and that two point five million dollars that's in there, we already have a million dollar set aside for that, for that twenty twenty, because that's, of course, not coming up next year, it's twenty twenty. So it's gonna be, it'll be, it'll be sitting in there. And also, just for information in general, we have a capital projects, uh, uh, fund balance as well. It has nine point six million dollars in there. That capital projects, uh, is, is something at our discretion that we can use. That replaces carpets. It replaces desks. It does things, you know, within the county to, to a capital project. It may be a new, a new building, if we're looking at new buildings and we build that up. Or it could be just service and maintenance that we have on a general basis. If you add all those together, that comes to thirty-four point five million dollars of your money that we have in the bank. Some of that, that one five percent statutorily that's told, told us by the state that we have to keep, that's what we have in there. And so all along, I've asked this question, and, and that is, is we have, we have that money in the bank already. It's sitting there, and yet we're asking for more money. Um, I've, I've, I've said this, I said it on Facebook. Uh, I can't in good conscience, with that money, come and ask for more, when I know that it's sitting in there. And, and the reason, and I, and I liked how Commissioner Ivy articulated it, because I think it's, it's important to note that I've heard, and I've heard from the citizens as well, we don't know, there's a possibility this year, if we hold the line, if we kinda keep making sure our expenses aren't exorbitant, and, and I don't think we, we do, but if we, in the sense of expenses being exorbitant, but if we hold the line and we watch the budget appropriately, why not give it a chance to see if the money that is in that cap, in, in the fund balance, we'll be able to even out, and we can probably turn that corner and look and see. Why not give that a chance? Because it's already your money that, that's, that's sitting in there. We can use it if we'll just budget, and we go through correct budgeting pr- principles and processes this next year. Um, in some cases, when I look at budgeting, you know, I, I'm, in my own household, I can say, I'd like to see, here's the budget for next year in our own home. But it never really works out exactly the way that I have it budgeted for the year. And so I'd like to see us, uh, as well, on a, on a, on a county basis, look and say, what, what's going on? And then maybe in a six-month period of time, we'll have a better projections, where we do benchmarking on where our revenues are coming in, and we know, because we're, we're anticipating a seven million dollar increase to our revenues, we're projecting that. No one, no one that I know of, if, if I was- No one, no one that I know of, if, if I was a financial genius, I'd be making millions of dollars off the stock market if I just understand one day. But we're trying to project out to the next year. And so, we're projecting $7 million increase, and that's a conservative number. It could go as high, it could go up to $10 million. I think, let's give it a chance. Let's work down through it. Again, I, I just think the Utah County way is, is that, one, we have your money already sitting in the bank. We do go through budgeting cycles in which there's ebbs and flows up and down. I will, I'll admit to anybody that, that we are going through a down cycle right now. We've been going through a down cycle in which we've been budgeting into our reserves. But I'd like to also focus that our actuals are different, and I think Commissioner Ivy pointed that out as well. That our actuals are different, that's less than our budgeting amount. If we have $7 million that we, that we budgeted, sometimes it turns down that it's $3 million, and so, that budget number reduces down to the actual numbers of spent. And, and, and give it a chance, and I would like to, you know, give that a chance. And so, with that, I think we can do it the Utah County way, which is, look at what we're doing. We're not, we're not cutting anybody back. My proposal is, is that we're not cutting the coalers out. Oh, and there's, there's a couple of things I wanna point out. I saw this on, on Facebook, and I, and I wanna say this publicly. Our deputies do not make over $100,000 a year. That, that is just flat wrong. It is not an accurate statement that I saw out there. Now, I'm not sure how they're getting to that number, if they're trying to tag salaries and benefits together and say, that's what that number is, but it came across as the deputies are making, all, all the deputies are making over $100,000 a year. That's just not right. So, I wanna make sure and squash that as soon as possible, because it's just not, not an accurate statement. And we talked a little bit last, last, I heard last week, no, yeah, last week, last week, about average salaries in the county, which is 60,000. They pointed that out, there's 60,000 on the average salaries or income, I should say, income. And, and, and the, and Utah County is at about 58,000 on an average, which is not a number that you can really bank on in the sense of really true comparisons, although it shows that our average income is right there at about the average for the county, because if you had a business that was full of engineers, just put it out there, and engineers, and you had a couple of secretaries, their average for their business is gonna be way above the average for the county. So, it's hard to really compare those, but ours, ours on an average basis is about $58,000. And that's before any wage increases or adjustments for this next year. So, again, if we could, I'd like to, to see us, and I've expressed this, I have, I, I think that it would be best, would be best served with the people, and from what I've heard, to not do an increase this year, and, and to see where we're at, and to go through the process, and, and budget appropriately all the way through with the county.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing to that, just, 'cause I didn't hear Commissioner Lee say it, and so, I wanna give him a chance. On that 25, just over 25 million dollars in our reserves, I heard the 3.6 for the 5%, the 3 million in the recap, the 600,000 for D-DAP, 1 million for 2020 election, all true. But Commissioner Ivy, and I'm using his round number, because again, it's not exact, pointed out that we had $7 million in assigned fund balance, which does come out of that. So, it's not really 8.2 million, 'cause if we did spend every penny this year, it would be 15.2 million. So, it takes our reserves down. Not that it's unhealthy, it's still 19 million.
Worse than seven?
In, in the assigned fund balance for this year's budget.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So, potentially, that could come out of it. It's not, it's not gone yet, but it could. And so, I think, when we're talking, 'cause I know, I had no idea what a fund balance or assigned fund balance was before I had to start staring at these budgets. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that correct number.
Thank you. At this point in time, we are on agenda item number one, technically, in our meeting, and we would open that for public comment. And it is to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the collection of additional ad valorem tax revenue resulting in levying a tax rate in excess of the certified tax rate for 2019. Again, we would like anyone from the public who wishes to comment to have that opportunity. If you'll please come to the podium and state your name for the record. To give everyone an opportunity to speak, we would ask you keep your comments to about two minutes.
My name's Steve White, former county commissioner. There are three things that the commission needs to do. One, set a building plan, which units are gonna be open, which one are gonna be mothballed. Two, set a staffing plan, and then three, provide a budget to fund those two things. You know that, but the public probably doesn't. Right now, the sheriff's office is down 20 deputies. That means that we're paying time and a half to somebody else to cover those shifts, because all three, all three modules of the jail are open and full. And so, adding personnel to that is critical. Not, not only that, but it'll save money. When I became a commissioner, Sheriff Tracy came to me and said, Steve, every one of our vehicles is over 120,000 miles, and they're all bottoming out. We can't even do a three-point turn. We replaced every vehicle in the county over three years and set up that perpetual fund. It's critical. The needs of the county, we have fewer employees per 10,000 residents than any county in the state. Fewer than Salt Lake, fewer than Davis, fewer than Weber, Washington, those that are comparable, second-class counties. So, all I would say is, first, make sure you set the staffing plan and you know what your real needs are, and fully staff the county, because it lowers our cost. Because the benefits of overtime are much more expensive than they are for regular time. And I went to Sheriff Tracy just before, a year before I was up for reelection, and I said, Sheriff, you said you needed 10 more patrol deputies. Do you still need them? And he said, no, Steve, I don't. And I said, okay, then we won't worry about budgeting them for next, you know, five per year for the next two years. So, let's make sure the staffing plan is adequate, 'cause it'll save money. Let's make sure that we do the right things the right way, so that the residents of the county can benefit from that. Sorry, I, I'm gonna have to go sing a show tune now, 'cause I'll be late for Cubs, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Jacob Zantz. I'm with the PG Watch Dogs down in Pleasant Grove. I, I'm just really tired. That's why I'm here. I have been working really hard in Pleasant Grove to keep our taxes low, our fees low, our, our, our rates low, to no avail. Spent so many hours. I, I don't have the money to, to put into campaigning. I don't have the money to help my neighbors as much as I wish I could. I have the time. I spend my time doing this. And in Pleasant Grove, we failed. They've continually raised our rates on everything that we get from them. They've, they've added new services in road fees and, and different things, and, and the, and the, the school board has increased our rates every year. The bonds are, there's more and more bonds to build new buildings that may not be necessary. I, it's a struggle. Right now, I don't have enough food in my home for my kids. It's a struggle. I have, in my small community, in my neighborhood, my ward, there are elderly women and low-income friends of mine who are struggling. I see the change you put in those bags. That's the argument I hear for every single tax increase that I've ever heard. It's pennies. $5 here, $3 there, $10 there. It adds up, and it adds up really fast. My city bill has doubled in the past five years in Pleasant Grove. It's doubled. My income tax is not going down. It's going up. My property taxes are going up. I can't maintain my own home. I'm house poor. I wasn't, it wasn't that way before. I went door to door and received 3,000 signatures of people in Pleasant Grove saying they didn't want a road tax. The city still passed it. We lost in the election, because they said it's pennies. It's $5. Anyone can afford $5 a month. Anyone can afford $5 a month. That's not true. Not anyone. There are people out there who cannot afford another $5 a month. If we have reserves, if we have a way to possibly make it through this next year, I say, let's do it. Let's do it the Utah way. Do we have mandates from the state requiring us to build things? Yes, we do. And do they have a surplus in the billions of dollars that they've already collected from us, that I'm already struggling to pay? Why don't we demand that they come down and build those buildings that they require? And then we have special interest groups who stand up and say, let's raise the sales tax another quarter cent. It's only pennies. It's only $5 a month. 100 times 5 is $500 a month. We are gonna get there. Eventually, we're gonna have so many new taxes that you will be putting people out of their homes. They won't be able to afford to live in Utah County anymore. Stand up. Represent Utah County. Demand the state pay for their mandates with the money that they already have. Use the money that we have in surplus to take care of our needs now. Demand that. That's why I elect you. Nathan, I voted for you. Bill, I voted for you. Greg, I voted for you too. You all stood for Republican values. It's hurting us. We are tired. The state, the city, the county, the federal government, the fees, the hidden tax of inflation, the federal government printing money like wild, it's hurting us all. If you want more money in the coffers, cut our taxes and convince the state to do the same, and convince the federal government to do the same, and stop the cities from taking so much from us. We just passed another tax in Pleasant Grove for recreational opportunities for people. We're taking money from the poorest among us to pay for the recreational activities of the middle class. 'Cause guess what? Those poor people can't afford swim lessons. They can't afford soccer. It costs $45. But guess, it's $5 cheaper for the middle class, because now we have the tax, a new tax to pay for those things. Don't allow the middle class to steal from the poor. Don't allow it. I came here so you can remember the widows, so you can remember people like me who are struggling, who don't have the money. I, I, if I could, I would pay for all of my friends who are struggling right now. I would pay their bills. I don't have that money, but you do. In the millions of dollars, the state does, in the billions of dollars, they can help my friends. They can help my neighbors. They can help the widows on, just down the street from me, who are on a fixed income, who are struggling, and who do have increases in taxes. They do have that increase. And that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Put that there. I've missed that bottle.
Yeah. That bottle's there because of a problem I got when I was undercover back years ago and breathed too many methamphetamine lab fumes. My name is Jim Tracy, resident of Provo, retired Utah County sheriff. I wanna first thank all of you for this opportunity as a commission, and I think these opening statements that you gave were very good as far as helping the understanding. I rise today in support of the county property tax increase. Commissioner Ivy sent out a Facebook post that you kind of alluded to, where you quoted Albert Einstein talking about, anyone can know. The point is to understand. I'll quote another similar thought out of a book called Proverbs 4:7, and it says, wisdom is the principal thing. And then, on top of that, therefore, get wisdom, and with all thy wisdom, get understanding. Same principle. I'd like to take this opportunity in an effort to kinda expand, hopefully, the understanding of why I'm making this statement in support of the tax increase. There were two statements that were made last week that I, I think, made less understanding occur. One of them was when Commissioner Lee talked about Utah County has the lowest tax rate, and then answered yes and no. And then, you went on to explain about a total tax bill versus the county portion of a tax bill. The fact is, Utah County's portion of that tax bill is the lowest, according to Commissioner Ivy in his Facebook post, and he mentioned that. We are the lowest urban county as a pro, you know, as a per capita expenditure of anybody in the United States. And we are certainly the lowest in Utah County, or in Utah State, as far as the 29 counties go. The per capita rate, and you can get that from UAC, is, Utah Association of Counties, excuse me, is less than $7 per head. The next county to us, if we were to double that, may actually put us a little bit over that, but most likely, we would still be 29 out of 29. Now, I understand money is tight. I understand a fixed budget now. And I, as a retiree now, I'm on a fixed budget. Interestingly enough, Utah County opted out of social security many years ago. So, after I filed and got my part A and part B taken care of, I proudly took my $22 check, which is my monthly social security check, and down and put that in the bank. So, I understand not having a lot of money anymore, but we were fixed before. We'll be fixed again. But here's the issue. Within Utah County and that tax bill, this is my 2018 tax assessment, 6.79% of my total tax bill is the county's portion. The rest of it goes, as has been said, to school districts, to special service districts. But the county's portion is 6.79%. We are at that crossroads that Commissioner Graves talked about. We have done it the Utah County way for many years, but demands of service are intersecting with costs, and they are driving us to a point where we are rapidly at unacceptable levels of service. These good people here think that they're getting one thing, when in fact, I would, I think they'd be surprised to know what they're not getting based on the inability to keep up with these calls for service and that demand. When I, when we talked about the lowest amount of county employees per, per 10,000, per any county in the state, I only ever looked at what, how many Utah County sheriff's office employees there were in relationship to any other county's sheriff's office, and what that workload was compared to our workload. We can bat those numbers around, but when it comes to the sheriff's office and public safety, you look at the facts of a Davis County. Davis County is only a tad over 600 square miles in size. Same with Weber County, about 650-something square miles. Utah County is 2,144 square miles of surface, of which over 1,800 square miles is in unincorporated area, responsible for public safety to the sheriff. Those response times, when I have to, and deputies have to move many miles to get from point A to point B because of a call, that accounts for increase in a workload and a decrease in a capability. When you talk about the population that they serve, Davis County, 347,000. Weber, six, is, is about 251,000. Utah County, 606,000 people. Yes, they live in a city, but they don't recreate. They don't swim, golf, fly, run four-wheelers in the cities. They do in the county. So, we have that day workload increase, where these people come out and do all those things that we have to go fix when they don't come home, or when somebody has their thermos stolen, or somebody gets raped, or somebody gets killed in the county area. We're responsible for that, yet our deputy numbers are the same, almost exactly the same as those in Davis and Weber County who have half the terr, well, a third of the territory and half the population. Those pressures are real, and they're here now. And then, combined with the issues of cost, as you know, almost 40, just under 40 Utah County deputies and other employees, civil employees, have left the sheriff's office in the two and a half years. based on that they can go other places. That's fine. We're not trying to keep up with the Joneses, I understand that. But when that opportunity is out there that a senior sergeant can walk away from Utah County after fifteen years and walk into another agency and get a twelve dollar raise, you know, per hour raise, they're doing it. We're losing institutional knowledge, experience, and that's gonna have a benefit or negative benefit effect as we go forward in time. I'll quickly close here. In two thousand and eight, and it was referenced by then Commissioner White, who just left, the sheriff's office let go twenty-four sworn positions because the economy slowed down. I was the only department head at that time or elected official that even took anybody out of the county. It was in deference to that reduced economy and revenues. Since that time and including that time, growth hasn't stopped in the county. It continued in eight, nine, and ten, and it's gone exponential in the last three or four years. So those numbers, even though the economy, the economy is up or down, the demands of service has continued to increase. And that's my point. The last point I would say is that it's dangerous to me for the county to dip into those reserves for the issue of, that is our contingency fund. If those monies are not available and we have a huge issue, I've looked at the Bureau of Reclamation inundation flood maps. If Deer Creek should burst or whether Jordanelle should break and then overtop Deer Creek. If we should have the eight point zero magnitude earthquake that they are saying we are way overdue for, this county would be dropped immediately based on infrastructure failure into twenty-six different islands where you could not get in or out for people to leave or to get services in. Those are things that we have studied from the emergency management position. And you would expend all of those monies that you've got in reserve in short order. And they need to be there for the benefit of the worst thing that could happen to all of these citizens. So that's why I believe an increase at this time is, is warranted so that we don't go into those funds and end up taking a risk that we hope nothing happens on your watch so that the public will find out that we failed to provide for that in the future by expending those funds in reserve. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, since my name was pointed out on there, I'll make sure and clarify. It is, it is true that the tax rate, which is the, the portion that Utah County has as property tax is the lowest in the state. That is true, that sliver of piece. If you compare Utah County's property tax slice of the pie compared to the other counties is true. The point was, was that overall with the taxation of every, every entity in there for property tax, we are not the lowest. That was, that was the point I was trying to make. I, I mean, I don't, again, I don't go down and say, I write out where I check to Utah County and then that's to the, to the school district and to the cities. I wrote, I write a total, a total amount down at the bottom. That total amount is not the lowest in the state.
Now you're onto an idea, we should make people actually write it to the various entities.
Allow me one minute. I just would like to say something to that. And I was gonna say it last week, but the meeting was getting long and I didn't wanna listen to everybody speak. Commissioner Lee's not wrong in what that tax bill is and we all feel it. And as I pointed out last week, I've read the emails from Provo residents who are like, my taxes went up three hundred and thirty dollars. Uh huh, you voted for the school bond. It passed by the vote of the people. In Alpine, your taxes are going up. In Ebel, my taxes are going up because they voted on it, okay? I don't really care what the overall tax bill is in this meeting. I am a Utah County Commissioner responsible for the Utah County tax portion, that six point seven nine percent which you have elected me for to oversee. It's not my job to be responsible for the other ninety-three point two one percent of the taxes. That's everybody else's job to hold their people responsible. We are a county commission dealing with county taxes. So when we're talking about that tax rate, it is important. It's the only thing I'm elected to do is oversee Utah County. If I was over the school districts, trust, trust me, they'd be way different, but I'm not.
We'll continue with our public comment.
My name's Ryan McBride. I am a resident of Orem. I work for the Utah County Attorney's Office. I say that not because I represent anyone there, but because I wanna give some perspective of what my job looks like. I think that might be helpful to you and to the public as well. Do we need more resources? I think that's the question that we've gotta ask is, do we need more resources or is the government fulfilling its necessary functions? You know, and, and I don't know what the Health Department looks like. I don't know what the Assessor, Recorder, Clerk look like, but I know what my job looks like. And just to give you an idea, I currently have a caseload of a hundred and eighty-three open cases. Those are felonies and some class A misdemeanors. There are attorneys in our office with over two hundred open cases. I also have around one hundred or more probation cases. The National District Attorneys Association, the Department of Justice over the last decade or so have put out different numbers, but they recommend between a hundred and a hundred and fifty felony cases per year, per attorney, per prosecutor. So we are three times that number. And these studies came out, these, these, this research came out prior to the use of body cams. And that's a huge deal because as an attorney, when you're reviewing a case, body cam oftentimes is the most important piece of evidence. Body cam may take an hour, an hour or several hours to review because that's what the length of the traffic stop or whatever the investigation was. Felony prosecutors in our office average around three hundred and fifty cases per year, felony cases per year. When you compare that with defense attorneys, so again, I have a hundred and eighty-three open cases right now. That's not counting probation cases. The defense attorneys, the public defender's office have around eighty open cases per defense attorney. What does that mean? What does that look like in practice? Accounting for court time, I have around seven minutes per open case per week. And that's being generous because it's not taking into account what trials do to my schedule when I'm in, in court all week long or I have a, have a seven-week trial coming up. I have a six-week murder trial coming up after that. I just had a four-week murder trial go off and all the prep that goes into that. But that, that seven minutes per open case per week is not even accounting for those cases. It's not accounting for probation cases. It's not accounting for calls from officers. It's not accounting for legal motions or special assignments like murder cases. It's not even accounting for bathroom breaks. Seven minutes per open case per week. What can you do in seven minutes? You can read a brief police report and take a small note. That's all you can do in seven minutes. That's not enough time to call victims. It's not enough time to call witnesses. It's not enough time to check a defendant's history. It's not enough time to check on a defendant's needs, potentially get input from his family, watch recordings like body cam or dash cam. It's not enough time to do a good thorough job, to be honest. And the result is because attorneys in our office can't stand to operate like this, we go home, after we have dinner, we go back to work. On the weekends, we work. On my team, I see that. The working after hours and on weekends is the norm, it's not the exception. The reality is even with those extra hours, it's extremely difficult to maintain minimum levels of preparation and competence. So who cares, right? Who cares? Well, if you're a victim, you're gonna want some attention. It would be nice if your car was stolen to get a cop, a call from the prosecutor saying, we have your case, we filed it, this is the court process you need to expect. We'll ask for your input. When it comes to sentencing, we ask for your input right now. If it's a, if it's set for a hearing, we'll have you in beforehand, let you know what kind of questions are gonna be asked. It would be nice to have those. The reality is that there are cases that are resolved without speaking with victims. And it's not because prosecutors don't want to. It's because prosecutors have seven minutes per case per week. Prosecutors simply don't have time. What, who cares? If you're a defendant, you'll want to know that a prosecutor, a legally trained person that knows a defendant's constitutional rights screens your case for factual sufficiency, meaning that it can be proved and there's proof beyond a reasonable doubt that can be presented, and for legal sufficiency, which means making sure there's not some kind of constitutional violation that should be discovered. If you're a defendant, you're gonna wanna know that. You're gonna wanna know. It would be nice to know that someone is reviewing those body cams to make sure that your rights are, are maintained. If you're a police officer and this is your work, it would be nice to know that the prosecutor is reviewing your work closely and carefully and is giving the, your, your investigation, your case, the attention it needs. The research has shown that the higher the caseload for prosecutors, the higher the likelihood for error, either in giving too lenient of a plea to offer, losing at trial or not even giving appropriate attention to the needs of a defendant. It's difficult to describe the effect of this lack of time from a, from a prosecutor's standpoint. It's hard for people to understand because prosecutors, unlike builders, unlike doctors that are performing surgery, prosecutors make decisions, that's what we do. We make decisions. But I think an analogy might help. If your doctor was required to perform a hundred surgeries a week, giving no more than ten minutes per operation, what, what would his margin of error be? Would you be satisfied with that if you're that patient? The reality is the decisions of a prosecutor can have just as powerful an effect on the lives of people as that doctor can. If the prosecutor makes a decision that he's gonna stick someone with a felony for life, that's gonna affect that person's life for, for that, from then on. Or the prosecutor makes a decision to make a plea offer that'll put the person in prison for life. That's important. Or the prosecutor decides to dismiss a charge or give a resolution that lets a dangerous person out who could take someone else's life. Those are important decisions and...
I'm not trying to cut you off, but I did ask to keep it at two minutes, so we, hey, we're kinda getting a line behind you.
Thank you. The point is that, that I think, I think the residents of Utah County are suffering because of it. I wish I had more time. I'm not able to prosecute, to practice law the way I would like. And if we had more prosecutors in the office, it would help. And I think that this, this Utah County way, it hasn't made any difference so far. The problem's only gotten worse in my view. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Neil Harmon, I'm a Provo resident. My comments will be short. I, as a business owner, often think about numbers and look to details on numbers. And, and I could be wrong, but as I looked up the Utah County Jail Housing Division, it houses one thousand ninety-two inmates. And there's approximately nine hundred and forty-two in the jail at any one time. And Commissioner Graves said that we have a budget of three million dollars to feeding the inmates and that we're spending sixty-one cents per meal. I just did a quick calculation. And with a, if we assume that the jail is completely full and there's a thousand ninety-two inmates times three hundred and sixty-five days, times three meals, times sixty-one cents, that would be seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and one dollars. So I did a backwards calculation on three million and it came to two fifty-one per inmate, per meal, which is about double my family's budget. I suspect that in that budget, there's also administrative costs and actual employees and such. But that's the kind of thinking that I like to get into when making these kinds of decisions. And I wanted to bring that point up. You guys have difficult jobs. Especially our friend, the attorney who just spoke to us, has the most difficult job. I don't envy the situation that we're all in. That's all of my comments.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. It's a, it's a snowy night.
If we can get your name for the record, please.
Yes, I'm getting there. Just getting my notes.
Gotcha.
My name is Mike Coyle, I'm from Springville. My, my first comment I wanna make is for Mr. Kerry Smith. He was here last week, I don't know if he's here tonight. But he made a comment that is very personal to me for family reasons. And he talked about mentally ill girl that was talked into killing herself. And he said that, you know, we shouldn't be helping, we shouldn't be convicting people. Mr. McBride, who I know very well, is a very good prosecutor, that we shouldn't be convicting people that are helping friends commit suicide. Mr. Smith, if you are watching, if you are here, I don't know if you are not, but helping a mentally ill teenager can, over the edge and wa, watching it and recording it for your own sick, personal gratification is not assisted suicide, it's murder. And if we are a community are going to condone that kind of behavior, as you did last week, we've got bigger issues to discuss than taxes and budgets. So, gentlemen, you guys have been elected to pass a budget and to discuss our taxes. And this is based on, not on your personal feelings, on your political aspirations or desires, but to provide for the needs of the county mandates and for the services. I remember last year, just last year, Sheriff, I guess he's left, Sheriff got up and he said, this can has been kicked too far down the road. Every year, we kick this can down the road. It was actually interesting that it was this meeting last year, December twelfth last year, you guys voted to put a million dollars in reserves for back pay for the employees that you guys have since decided we, your county employees are not going to get. You guys have not, but that back on the agenda for us. But you guys have to have a decision to make tonight to either fund the county budget as it's needed and dip into the reserves and keep dipping and dipping and dipping and dipping, or to pa, kick the can down the road again. We had horrific fires that affected a lot of the employees. We missed a lot of nights with our families because we were sitting on those fires. A lot of good people lost a lot of, lost a lot of things because they lost it on, on their lands. I'm not gonna deny that, but a loss, a lot of time with their families because they were taking care of the county. We keep losing employees, we keep losing our friends to better agencies, to different agencies, not better, different agencies. Let's stop the bleeding and let's help this county grow and be the best county that we can be. And that's your call tonight. Are you gonna fund us? Are you gonna take care of us? You guys promised us twenty eighteen was gonna be the hashtag year of the employee. Let's finish it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is J.D. Willardson. I'm a resident of American Fork. My background as a CPA, MBA, ad hoc credit administration has been involved with preparing many budgets over forty, fifty years. There have been some unmet needs that have been expressed here tonight. But the way that those needs generally are met in a prudent budget process is like the attorney that indicated the workload that was very excessive is for his supervisor to present, based on his workload, the personnel need to adequately take care of those needs. Now, his comment was that Utah citizens are suffering. I agree. Yes, they are. I have a few units that are rented at very low income. One of my tenants happens to be a Native American who is legally blind and hard of hearing. Another one who is a retired Army vet and I am proud of him because I was proud to be a Vietnam veteran. He is eighty years old. How are we going to adequately adjust for a twenty-seven point five percent increase that we can't absorb? I refer to you to a November second article in the Daily Herald regarding Orem that said that Orem among many, perhaps most of the cities in Utah have a under-affordable housing shortage. Five thousand units is what Orem said. By increasing the rate at this amount in property taxes is going to increase the unaffordable housing. Yes, we have citizens that are suffering. Now, again, we get back to the budget process. Supervisors need to adequately present and support the needs to adequately cover the cost of the services that you are providing for us. And I commend each of you on your presentations. They all made sense. But when there is a budget, surpluses are meant to be used. And when there is surplus reserve to ask the citizens to come up with a tax increase, until those reserves apparently are not, and it's evident that they're not going to adequately be met, that's when you increase the tax rate. I like what Commissioner Lee said, that wait and see. This is the prudent approach to take. In the meantime, supervisors submit your unmet urgent needs. All requests should be prioritized based on urgency. And then you can make budget adjustments where necessary, if you have to, and eventually increase the tax rate. But until those reserves are met, there is, looking at the projected rate of increase, 10% over the next five years, or 14% over the next five years, 28% in 10 years, there's going to be revenues coming in. Yes, there's going to be costs associated with them, but there's going to be revenues also from the landlords, from sales tax, well, from other sources. Well, I think it's prudent, in my opinion, from my experience, to wait and see where we are at before imposing an additional hardship on the citizens of Utah County. We appreciate very much the services that are being rendered, and we want to make adjustments where necessary, to take care of urgent needs. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Willardson, while you're walking back, just so you know, the county attorney actually has, the last two budget cycles, asked for over 20 attorneys and staff. So we've been holding him down, and he is elected. So he has actually presented that plan and would probably love to email it to you, but there will be a new one.
Okay, that's the way to do it, is for them to make the request, and then for you to decide what the urgency levels are.
Which we have been doing, and again, I think we still feel comfortable with those decisions at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My name is Lily Ann Bristol, and I also am from Pleasant Grove, like Jacob's aunts. After my husband died, I decided to downsize and move to Pleasant Grove, losing a thousand square foot of home, thinking my bills would go down also. Instead, I have no sidewalk, no garage, no rain gutters, no sprinklers, all my bills are higher and continue to rise because of all the taxes and fees being put on us. And my car's been torn up by the roads in the city, which is one of Pleasant Grove's biggest problems. I'm very frugal. I don't go many places because I don't have the extra money I needed. I use the insurance money to pay off my house so that I would never be homeless. And I struggle each year to have the money to pay for my property taxes. And now you want to up that by 27%. Why not use the surplus money you have to pay for the mandates instead of raising our taxes? Shortly after I moved to Pleasant Grove, a former Pleasant Grove citizen said they had just moved from Pleasant Grove because of the politics and how things were handled in the city. In hindsight, I wish I'd heard that before I bought, because I would have checked into that and not moved to Pleasant Grove. So now, it's like, do I consider not only moving out of Pleasant Grove, but out of Utah County, too? I don't know. People hate politics, and too often choose not to get involved because of all the lies, deceptions, taxes to support special interest groups, and shenanigans that are associated with politics. You are representing the whole county, and sometimes that means not getting your way or a pet project. We have to stop spending money that we don't have, just like in a household. You prioritize what is most important and shift things around in the budget to accomplish that, or you end up in debt up to your eyeballs and eventually bankrupt. This might mean we have to put our wants on hold. We have to do needs, not wants, and too many people don't get that definition really well. I debated whether to say this part, but a friend from Pleasant Grove, when we were going through this road stuff, he came up with a solution that I think is brilliant. He says, "I kept hearing what services would get cut to pay for, in our case, roads, but whatever, you know, you're looking for." We pay department heads to manage their budgets. Executives that get paid as well as they do are paid to make the hard decisions. He recommended the following: Accept the fire and the police. With one month's heads up, cut the pay of every department head by 5%. This becomes their new base pay. This base pay gets cut the same 5% amount every month until it equals 50% of their original pay 10 months later. Then on top of their base pay, add back 10 cents on the dollar in bonus pay for every dollar they can find, whether by cutting the waste, fee increases, spending decreases, outsourcing, et cetera. 10 cents for every dollar that they can free up for whatever they're trying to do. In PG, we needed another 2.3 million. A tenth of that, 230,000, the department heads get to split with this catch. It's first come, first served. Once the 2.3 million is reached, the bonus pay locks in and becomes permanent. The department heads that free up the most first get the most. It's a race, essentially. This puts competition in the service of the citizens. I guarantee you that 2.3 million would appear in short order. Businesses and families do this all the time. He had recently witnessed a business go through this tough process in a matter of weeks. And he said, "It wasn't many years ago BYU's budgets were cut 15% across the board, twice what our cut was. It was hard to do. It had nothing to do with who loves or hates BYU. It was a fiscal reality and a priority adjustment. They became better as a result. This council is just as capable." I'll end with this. I heard a talk once titled, "What if our only motive was love?" I ask, what if your only motive was what is best for the citizens of Utah County? What choices would you then make?
Thank you.
My name is Jim Ashton.
You can actually tilt the tip, is all that moves. There you go, so you don't have to bend as much.
Okay. My name is Jim Ashton. I'm a resident of Provo. And my background is in, I've been in industry and finance, and a controller for a couple companies, and I understand budget processes and so forth. I'm not questioning how you came up with your budget numbers, because you guys are a lot closer to that than I would be, as you go through those processes. But I think the struggle that I really have is, before we raise taxes, and I have to agree with the gentleman that just spoke before, the woman that was up here, is that if there's a surplus out there, it seems like to me, and we're not sure what the revenues are going to be, at least that's what I'm hearing, that it seems like to me, before we're really anxious to pull the trigger on raising taxes, I mean, you kind of know what your budgets are, that we would certainly dip maybe a little bit more into that surplus to make sure that we're not so anxious to pull the trigger on taxes to people who can't afford it, before we know exactly where those revenues are going to be. And I just, you know, I want to be brief, but I think that, and over time, you could look at your departments, and at any suggestions that you've gotten and so forth, you know, relook at those budgets and see if there's ways that you can actually save. If you can, great. If not, the needs are there. You recognize what those are. But before you go on to pull the trigger on such a large increase, I would think it'd be appropriate to dip in maybe more of those funds, you know, until you really understand what the revenues are going to be. Because I know the county's growing fast. There's a lot of new residents being built. There should be more revenues coming in and so forth. I know that, you know, when I look at my tax bills, I've never seen them go down, and in industry, I never see, you know, this kind of, typically, these kind of increases in wages and so forth that people can afford. So I just want to leave that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Thorpe. I'm a retired physician. I've lived in Utah County for about three years. A couple of points I want to make. First, I was here last week because I had received a postcard and told me that was going to happen. Both areas were filled to capacity, and there were people in the hallway, and tonight, there's hardly half as many people here. I question the commitment of the commission to adequately inform the public of these kinds of meetings, and to make sure that people can come and participate in this process. I really don't feel like there's been inadequate means. I only found this out by word of mouth, because my neighbor happens to have inside information about this meeting, so I showed up. So I don't feel like that's being done well. Secondly, I did not bring my tax notice here. These last two meetings have been very illuminating to me, because what I'm hearing is, and what you gentlemen are concerned about, is very, you know, whatever, 6% or 9% or whatever it is of my total tax bill. And yet, people from Pleasant Grove are griping at you about the problems of Pleasant Grove, and the people from Orem are complaining to you about the problems from Orem, or wherever it is. And I think you guys are doing a very poor job of explaining to the public what this tax bill really means. Break it down. Whose feet should we be holding to the fire? It's very easy for Mr. Graves to put all this stuff up front, and that's very interesting, and I can understand that. And I hear the sheriff's comments, and I hear the district attorney's comments. I think those are legitimate things, and they should be funded appropriately. But if our tax bills keep coming up, who do we contact? Who do we really go and scream and yell at, who needs to be screamed and yelled at? I've heard a lot of comments, "Oh, it's the school boards," or "It's the school districts." Well, how does the school district get the money to put billboards all over in the Nebo School District to get a big bond passed? Where do they get that money? I don't know. But I don't think, I think you're doing a bad job, because you're sitting here taking all the heat for things that really are not your fault or responsibility. So I think, number one, I favor, and I would encourage you, to not pass it, to hold it for right now, and then spend some time educating the people in this county about the real needs that they have, that need to be met, like the sheriff's deputies, like the attorney's offices. I've also spent time in the military, and I've gone through budgeting processes there, and I've spent time in the private sector going through budgeting processes there. And I know how that works, too. People come in, and they have all their list of, "I want to, I got to have, it's necessary, it's needed, blah, 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 blah." But I also know that a lot of those meetings, I came away responsible for laboratories and providing quality medical care, and I was turned down repeatedly for this machine, that machine, this whatever, and we had to make do. And we made do, frankly. We just did. And so I kind of believe that the budget system, when all these departments come in and say, "Well, I need this, I need that," I think there's got to be a way to say no, to try and hold the line. I appreciate the fact that maybe we're the lowest of this, or the lowest of that, and we should be very proud of that. But my taxes keep going up, and if it's not you guys, at whose feet can I lay the blame? Because that's the people I want to talk to, and that's the people that I want to scream and yell at, because my tax bills aren't going up, or not going down either. Now, I'm well off, frankly. I'm not poor, but I have rentals, and I have elderly, and I have lower-income people living in those, and so I speak for them. I'm going to turn around and put these tax increases on their rent. And so I can afford to do, I can do that, but can they afford to pay it? And this, I'm not sure that they can. But is it all you guys, or is it really the school board, and the water district, and whoever else is on that blankety-blank tax bill? Because I don't think you're doing a very good job explaining that, and I wish you'd take the, don't raise it now, but make the case, and let us find out who really is raising our rates, and so that maybe a year from now, or November, you know, the 79 cents, or the buck and a half, or whatever it is, we're going to say, "Yeah, that's a legitimate thing for the county," because now I can go down to City Hall in Springville and pound the pulpit down there. Thank you.
Thank you for your prudent comments.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak this night. As you know, I am very reluctant to...
Just to remember to state your name.
Ah, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Jose Luis Lara. I live in Springville. I am very reluctant that the government take my responsibility. Okay, let me explain something to these people. I am an immigrant. It took me more than 10 years to be a citizen of the United States. And I can affirm with all the truth of my heart, I never have put my burdens in the government, never. Because I am an old generation. I am 77 years old. I believe in work. I believe in what you say, to use wisdom, using the money I have. I don't want to make here a drama, but I know what it is to live in a room and a bathroom. This is one of the apartments I rent, with only a small bed and a stove. You need to know that, because one day came the LDS church to visit me and said, "Brother, do you need help?" And I said, "No," because I am responsible. And this is my problem, and this is the way I am. What I did to solve this situation, I went to school. I took, okay, subjects in business administration, accounting, and I get associate degree in mathematics. And I worked as a teacher in Provo High School. I am 77 years old, and I think the last day of my life, I will be working, probably not there, probably in another place, because the government is not responsible for my life. I'm sorry. Because someone here put the responsibility in the government. That is wrong. That is socialism. And we don't live in socialism. We live in a republic. And this is very important. I respect the words Mr. Eby say, "One thing is to know, one thing is to understand." Who doesn't understand? I would like, I would like, we ask to ourselves, who are the people who don't understand? This is the country of the people, not of the government. And you are trying to solve all the problems of the people. Let the people solve the problems of the people. That is what I'm doing. I went to school. I am working, never going to stop working, because it's my responsibility. I never took welfare. Now, two things, because my time is, I know, it's over. If you let me talk, I can talk three hours here. And I will explain all my ideas to change this country, because we need to change first the conscience of the people, to change a society. And the person who talks about the attorney, and he needs the problems, is because the conscience of the people has not been changed. And this is our responsibility personally, to change our conscience. Okay, two things. I'm sorry. I believe in these principles. I don't believe in rules. I don't believe in rules. Okay, two things. One, I have here in these papers, I bought this home four years ago. In four years, Utah County increased the value of my home fifty percent, and of course, my taxes increased the same. Is it real that my home increased fifty percent? No, because I just study accounting, I know business administration. It's inflation, it's not the value of my home, it's inflation. And these papers that are there are inflation.
So before you approach, I don't mean to be rude, but we can't have you approach the bench.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And, and if you can work on wrapping it up.
It's a cascade of inflation, because that six dollars is going to be six hundred dollars, because it's, you pass, the next, the next person, the next person.
And I'm not trying to cut you off, but you, you definitely got your time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. My conclusion, my conclusion.
Quickly summarize. Thank you.
You have here, because you increased the value of my home, you have here the money, the excellent money to limit your budget. You have here, you don't need to ask for more taxes. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't be sorry, we appreciate your comments.
Michael Anderson, Provo, that's a hard act to follow, but I'll try. This meeting has been weird. Last week's had like three hundred people, and we spoke for like three hours, and everybody was against the tax increase. And then today, like, we got county employees and former employees like coming out of the woodwork to promote the tax, and I can understand why they would, and I can understand why every department head is asking for more money. I mean, everyone here who has a job would love to have more coworkers, too, to help spread the load. I can see why they would, why they would ask for that. But I'm asking you guys to say no. You were saying earlier, you don't want to pick the winners and losers, but you kind of have to. There isn't enough money to go around, you know? I don't live in a three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar house. I bought mine last year for two-hundred-and-nine thousand, you know? I don't replace my cars at a hundred-and-twenty-thousand miles, that's when I buy them. Like, I drive... I'm driving an '01 Dodge Stratus with no front bumper, it's parked outside if you want to go look at it, no heater, no AC, because I know how to say no. My little one-year-old asks for candy every single day, and I say no. I tell my barber no, as you can see, like...
Me, too, I just quit growing up.
Ah, there you go, yeah, two schools of thought. So I'm just asking you, just say no.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Ashton, I'm a resident of Pleasant Grove, and I, when it comes to taxes, I, I feel like every year there's something new that they're adding on to a tax. Every single year, something new, something more, something greater, something more. And, you know, there's a saying that nothing is more guaranteed in life than death in taxes. And unfortunately, it seems to be a miracle when taxes go down, and that shouldn't be the case. We see immense growth, we see, especially when we're talking about the, the value of homes going up and the property taxes going up, they've already gone up in the last four years, if it's according to his data, fifty percent values of a home. I can't afford a home. My wife and I would love to be in a home, we can't afford one. We both work, my wife works twelve-hour days, I work, I work for a company, and, and honestly, there are times when they come in, they say, "We have to cut budgets," and my pay gets docked, ten percent, happened this year. So my pay went down ten percent because the company was struggling. That's the way life is, it happens, it's real. And unfortunately, because with the government, I feel like there's this mentality that, well, we can just get more money, but you can't, because that money comes from somewhere, it comes from people like us, who work hard, and try to get the things that a lot of people take for granted, having a home, being able to have a family, being able to raise a family, because quite frankly, I would love to have children, I can't afford it. And I'm not gonna rely on the government to pay for my kids. I don't believe the government's responsibility is to do that. Why would we, why would we ever raise the taxes, especially twenty-seven percent, it's insane, it's ludicrous. Twenty-seven percent is nothing to scoff at, we seem, oh, it's just these pennies here in this bag, that's cute, but to us, it hits us in reality, to where we can't afford homes. Homes are now, we're looking at a starter home, and something that's in a community with smaller homes, and you're looking at, they're saying, in the mid-two hundreds. For a starter home, it's something that's very, I mean, nothing compared to what we would have gotten two, three years ago. I have friends who are moving out of homes that they had a couple of years ago and making almost a hundred thousand dollars on a home they paid two-hundred thousand dollars for because of the market has gone up. And the more we add to the taxes, that's not gonna do anything to help people like me who work full-time jobs, who work, I work in the tech industry. But the thing is, you have to be, you have to start somewhere, and you have to continue to grow, but that doesn't help anybody when you can't even afford to get into a home. And, you know, honestly, it's, it blows my mind that we're even considering raising the taxes this much on, on a property tax, that just makes it harder for me to get into a home eventually. And I hope and pray that eventually I will be able to get into one, but it's not a reality. And sorry if I went over time, but I beg you guys to not vote to get this through, this is insane.
So while you're still standing there, just so I can further illustrate, this was just to show the actual cost when Commissioner Ivey was talking about holding the rate?
Yes.
This is not reflective of twenty-seven percent? That number's on the postcard, this is actually about four percent, just so...
Yeah, I'm aware.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody else did, just in case.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, and, and, you know, that's, that's the thing, is it, it makes a big difference to people like me. It really does, 'cause that, you know, I can't even afford to get in a home, whereas two years ago, I probably could have purchased a home, and now we can't, and there, there, yet, we're getting more people coming into the community. We should be theoretically, if numbers, which is what I do, the numbers should be adding up to where more people are moving in, more people are paying property taxes, why are the tax, why do we need to add more to that when more people are coming in and they're higher than they've ever been? And it, they aren't gonna go down, let's be realistic here, taxes never go down. Maybe once in a while, they get a token tax, you know, that gets taken away, but it just keeps adding up and adding up until it's putting the burden on a lot of people who can't afford it. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeannie Bowen, and I'm a Provo resident. I am actually in favor of a tax increase. I don't believe you should just pull from the reserves, even if you do like Dave Ramsey's things, the very first thing he's telling you is, make sure you have that reserve, that, because you never know what's going to happen. And I also don't believe in, oh, we're just wait and see, we need to plan for our future now, because, you know, if, even as an individual, I am planning, hey, I need to retire one day, I need to have all these things in place. If you just wait and see, life will just pass you by, and you won't be able to, one day, afford the things you need to. Utah County has been doing, and, and it's like even a mantra, everyone's like, you know, do more with less, and I think we've, we've hit that limit. People have even brought up that, hey, we need to educate more. You know, there comes a point when people need to be, be responsible and actually learn, where they need to come out, because the people here at the county are willing to educate. If you come in, so, I work in the treasurer's office, you can come in and ask, how is this allocated, how do I find out about this? We will educate you, call up, and so it, it falls on the individual to actually really learn what, where their money is going. And, you know, everyone's saying, oh, their taxes are going up, and I don't believe in just willy-nilly doing that, I actually voted against things on our ballot. I think you should, but I do believe we do, we are in need of a small increase here now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dale Palmroy, I'm from Orem. I am a retired vet after twenty-seven years, retired from the state after twenty-one years. I've been planning my retirement for years and years and years. I was able to buy a home fifteen years ago. My property taxes have gone up in just the fast past five years, four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. I am now on a fixed income. Now, if you keep increasing the taxes, now, I agree that taxes need to be available, and I'm willing to have taxes, I'm willing to pay taxes, but the amount of taxation and the constant increase year on year, you're gonna put me out of my home, because I don't have more income coming in. I wish I did, I have never made a median income in my life. And being on the fixed income, with the tax, with the property values keep going up, you get increased taxes. And I'm sorry, I, I've reached a point where, I didn't find out about this meeting until I watched it on the news today at five, five-twenty, and I decided to get dressed and come down, because this is going to put me, make me homeless, and I don't want to be homeless. I planned for years in order to get into a house that I love, and now, it's gonna be putting me out within the next, what, five to ten years, because of the increase in taxes. You're gonna have another homeless vet on your hands, so I hope you have the services to provide for me.
Sir, would you afford me just a minute? By the way, thank you for your service. I'd just like to explain just something real quick, and Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Ivey both kind of touched on in their opening remarks, just so we can understand. The county's tax rate is different because it's set by the Constitution, right? We have the fifty-five, forty-five split.
Correct.
Your tax rate, it is a hundred percent true that it fluctuates every year. The assessed value does matter, but the assessed tax rate for Utah County is kind of immaterial. And the reason I say it that way, you pay the same dollar amount to Utah County, I'm only talking Utah County, every year. That's why it's a fixed budget for us as well, at the twenty-seven million dollars. So when Commissioner Ivey talked about if we hold that rate, a one-point-seven-million-dollar increase, this eight-eighty-nine, if you have a home that's now gone up in value like mine, to the average of three-forty-four, 'cause it was two-twenty when I bought it a couple of years ago, it would still stay at that dollar amount. I'm not saying it's not important, or it's just a couple pennies, I just want to make sure we all understand, that once that dollar value, uh, dollar value is set in the county, that's the actual dollar value, it stays for Utah County. That's why your percentage goes up and down every year, and sometimes it's six-point-seven, sometimes it's nine, sometimes, but the dollar amount you actually pay to the county for the county services does remain the same. And so I just want to make sure everybody understood that, and, and again, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jen Otten, so I live in Lyndon, Utah. I've lived there for twenty-eight years. I have two autistic sons, and I myself, I was crippled in a car crash in two thousand and two, it was not my fault, and, but none of us are collecting state support. Now, a lot of people have said, well, oh, you would totally qualify. Well, we believe that we are responsible for our own lives, and we take care of ourselves. So we're not getting state support for either of the boys or for myself, we just try and make through and do good budgeting. My husband works to provide for all of us, and he's driving the newer car, which is the two-thousand Dodge Intrepid, and he is stuck on the road in between the ball field at UVU on Twelfth West, and I've gotta go pull him home. But he's been waiting because he wanted me to have the opportunity to come in and, and say, "Guys, I, I understand that you say, well, we said that we're, we're only gonna, we said that we were going to raise it twenty-seven percent just so people would come." Well, I'm here, but the thing is, is that I'm, I'm not, not real happy with a lot of this, because taxes keep going up everywhere, and you say my house is worth two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, but I only get that if I sell it and move, and then I have to pay taxes on the difference. And so, you know, we don't want to move, but we, I have never seen our taxes go down. The few times when they've said, well, this particular bond or whatever has been paid off, we think, oh, great, so they're not gonna take that out, they immediately replace it with something else, and just a little bit more. It's always just a little bit more. Well, you know, when stuff like this happens to us and our family, we have a little bit of savings for emergencies, because we know, we drive old cars, and stuff happens. And now I've gotta go and buy some more Scotch tape, and a little more baling wire, so I can put it back together again, and we do our own repairs. And it's not easy, you can learn anything off of YouTube. And, and so, you know, I...
How to budget county governments.
Yeah, well, and it's not just the county, it's not just you guys, and we've heard from other people here, that it's their cities, and it's other, it's other institutions as well, but when you put it all together and you add it all up, it's really making it impossible for people to buy homes and afford homes, and really making it hard for us to keep up on everything else. I mean, I pay, I pay hundreds of dollars every year to register my old vehicles that have been paid off for a decade or more, but I still pay just as much, you know? And so, there, we get hit every, every kind of way, we pay sales taxes, we pay gas taxes, we pay this, that, and the other, and it all adds up, school taxes, and school taxes, and school taxes. So, you know, I'm just saying, I'm against this, you need to figure out a way to budget it, it's not hard, it's not easy for anybody to budget. You got a surplus, now may be the time to stretch that surplus just a little bit until some of these new people who are coming in start paying taxes and start pulling it in. But I've never seen a tax ever be rolled back, because it's always replaced with something else, and there's always a thousand good reasons, and people will get up and give really good impassioned reasons, you know, my gosh, I, I certainly want our deputies to be paid, I certainly want them to have enough of them. I feel terrible about the poor lawyer who has such a workload. I know that the, the attorney that represented me in my car crash spent about seven and a half minutes on my case, and that's why it was illegally thrown out, and then he wouldn't go back to court, but it had been seven years, and nobody would take it. So I got nothing for being crippled when I was forty years old, but I didn't pass that on to my neighbors by latching on to the state or federal tit, so to speak. You know, we, we made up for it by better budgeting, and by maybe not buying everything that we want, and maybe not buying the high quality that we'd like. Would I love to drive a newer car? You betcha, I sure would, but we haven't been able to afford it. So, we'll continue to, we'll continue to go through in Scotch tape and baling wire, but it's hurting other people even worse than us. So, thank you for hearing me, neighbors, appreciate y'all coming out.
Thank you. While, while this gentleman's walking up, if you'll allow me to, again, following Commissioner Lee, if, when I'm called out, I just want to clarify something, and then she's actually exactly right, that's the exact words I said, so I'd like to clarify just a little bit why I said, "We wanted to hear from you." It is extremely tough, it really is, as a commissioner, to listen to our department heads. I stand by my opening statement where they are good people and trying to serve you well. I believe them, they are good people. The hard part is making that character judgment, so when I said I wanted to pass or show this and get you all out, it was because I believe that in a government by the people and for the people, that is my core belief. And unless the people come and tell us what you want and the service levels at what you wanted, it is hard to budget, and that's what it's like being a commissioner, battling back and forth with the department heads to go through that and say, "No, we hear from the people, and this is what we hear," and so we go back and forth about that. That's why this is so important for us, because if, if we need to raise taxes thirty percent because the public demands it, fine, I mean, nobody's saying that, but if we don't need to raise taxes because you are okay with smaller services, great, and that's why this is important, and that's what I meant by wanting to hear from you, because this is your county as much as it's my county, so I'm sorry for that, sir.
Alan Christensen, I live in the county just south of American Fork. I support Commissioner Lee's position. Secondly, we have attempted to do in our society a lot of things for people that people maybe will have to do for themselves. I spent the, I spent the first twenty-two years and a half of my life in this county. I went away to graduate school on a graduate assistantship. One summer, I lived in the barn to save money. The interesting thing was, California, for resident students, charged fifty dollars a semester then. The fees now are like ten thousand dollars at the University of California. What happened? We began to provide this service, and that service, and another service... We began to provide this service and that service and another service that people were really responsible for providing for themselves. And that's the thing that I think is the most compelling thing that we have to look at. What is it that we are doing that needs to be done by the government at the county level or at the state level or the federal level? And what is it that the people are going to have to do for themselves? We're getting to where the tax load is burdensome. You've heard again tonight, and we were here last week, that's the tax rates, all put together, have become confiscatory for people who don't have much money. And that's the issue in front of us. How much? How much did the government try and do for us? And how much should we do for ourselves? We're making weak citizenry if we try and go from cradle to the grave and the government takes care of us. There's no way around it. The interesting thing is, I was in California when Proposition thirteen passed. Jerry Brown was the governor then. They have a training program for governors, but it doesn't work too well in California. And, um, I was a small attempt at humor.
It was a good one.
It was a very good one.
I wished it had been better. But, um, the immediate thing after the passage of Proposition thirteen, suddenly Jerry Brown was all in favor, was the Jerry Jarvis Gann Amendment. And the interesting thing is, by freezing those property taxes, California didn't fail. They're still here. They've got all kinds of trouble. And most of it relates to trying to do things for people that people ought to do for themselves.
I'd just like to make this observation. If anyone in this room voted for the NIBO bond or the Alpine School District bond, they have no business being here complaining about taxes.
Sorry, I got to clap for that one.
When I see them building these gigantic palaces called school buildings, it's ridiculous. Now let me get to the subject of tonight's meeting. I just had the opportunity to, over a year and a half, work with the county on a four-lot subdivision. Based on that experience, I would suggest that the Department of Environmental Quality budget be cut by fifty percent. Their dealings were ridiculous as far as I can see. Supposedly protecting the public, but imposing very arbitrary decisions. Furthermore, the Department of Public Works, uh, by very arbitrary application of their rules, cost that four-lot subdivision over eighty thousand dollars additional. So I would suggest that the, um, departments be given the jurisdiction not to enforce rules strictly, but to use some common sense in interpreting those rules. As I heard the attorney and the former sheriff make their presentations, while I would suggest certain departments be reduced, I think that they definitely need to have further revenues. So my point is, I would think that a modest increase this year might be appropriate because inflation is there. I think twenty-seven percent this year is maybe a bit overdone. So maybe five or six percent or eight percent. And then follow Commissioner Lee's suggestion that we wait and maybe we need another ten percent next year. But let's see how this unfolds. Thank you.
Wayne Christensen from American Fork. You're going to get an increase because you're going to increase the value of all properties in this county. So you don't need anything more than that. Because I have never seen, in my years of owning a home, that the home value has gone down unless you go to the Board of Adjustment and fight for it. That's the first point. Second point is the emergency departments need new vehicles for safety. But a hundred thousand miles is not that great a miles on a vehicle. I just turned a vehicle over to my nephew that had three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. Those vehicles, when they're not safe to be used in emergency departments, need to be turned over to the other departments and finish running out. Vehicles depreciate at such a great rate that you don't need to say, "Oh, we'll trade them in and we'll get pennies on the dollar." So our other departments can have a new vehicle and ride around in the county. If their cars break down, it really doesn't matter, but the police and the fire departments do. And you ought to put, and you ought to make sure that a vehicle that's bought in the other department, in a lot of cases, doesn't need to be the fancy four-door pickup or some other things. There is ways to cut. And the department heads will spend everything you give them. And that's typically what happens in government, is the fact if we have a budget, we better get it spent because we won't get it next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. I want to, one of the nice parts about this evening with public comment and this actually being part of our agenda is we can give some dialogue, although we don't engage in debate. One thing I want to make sure the public understands very thoroughly, because a property value increases, by state law, the state certified rate will decrease. Last year, your certified rate from the county decreased by six percent to make up for your home value increasing. The simplest way I can explain this law that I think has helped people understand because it is complex. Last year, if your home was valued at ten thousand dollars and your certified rate was ten percent, you would have contributed a thousand dollars to Utah County. If your home value increased and was now at twenty thousand dollars, obviously if you paid the ten percent, your home, your pro, your taxes would have been two thousand dollars. Because of state law, that rate would actually be adjusted to five percent so that you still paid the thousand dollars, unless we go through the truth and taxation process and set a different rate. And so while your property taxes have increased, it's because taxing entities like your school district and your cities have gone through that truth and taxation process and adjusted that rate. So, so last year, we slid your rate down six percent by state law. And, and so I think it's critical that people understand that in relationship to property evaluation.
I'll finish it with this. You ought to take a look with what you're saying because every year, the dollar amount on the bottom of my taxes goes up.
And, and no, no one on this board or in this room that's in favor or against the property tax disputes that fact. We're just simply trying to make sure people understand where those increases are coming from and, and how that law is applied. No one's disputing the fact-
It's not the county portion.
-that they've gone up.
And that's why the gentleman's right in the fact that we haven't done a successful job in helping everybody understand. And quite honestly, you have a thousand county employees that are frustrated with the same thing because people call, people like me before I was a commissioner, call them and say, "Why in the world?" And blah, blah, blah. And, and so, you're right, we need to be better educated as a public.
And, and no one is disputing the fact that on your bottom line, it's gone up. That's why we're having this conversation. That's why this is a heavy matter for us. Because while we are charged with looking at the Utah County portion, we also recognize that in the end, the bottom line affects us all because my property taxes have gone up too.
Okay. U.S.S. fees everywhere, and they increase. Do you know what the difference, the total difference between a fee and a tax is?
Nothing. It's the same thing.
That is correct. One is spelled F.E.E., the other is spelled-
I'll, I'll tell you the difference for government. If they slap a fee, it's because they don't have to go through this process and be responsible to the people. That's the problem with a fee that we all pay.
But the difference, literally, is one is spelled F.E.E., the other is spelled T.A.X. No other difference.
And that's why as commissioners, we actually advocated, I think this is a, because we get to have dialogue, I think it's important to understand as commissioners, this last year, we advocated with the state legislature on some fees that were being assessed by cities, cities, making that exact argument that they should have to go through the truth and taxation process. And we were able to successfully pass a bill from a Utah County legislature with the help of the three of us to help in that very area. So those are one of the things that we don't get to talk about a lot, where we're truly trying to advocate for the taxpayer. We'll continue with the public comment.
Dan Thomas, Spanish Fork. I just, uh, I'm probably going to talk about something different, but, uh, than what I should. I just want to take this time to, to thank all the public comment. Uh, it's, it's a true honor. I work for the county. So it's an honor to work for these citizens. And I love them to death. That's why I'm here at this job. I mean, I would do this job for free if I could. I still support a family. I, I just really love these guys. Um, thank you. I'm taking the time right now to thank, thank them for the, the support that they, they showed us tonight. So I, I, uh, I'll continue to, to provide the best service I can as a county employee. Uh, my family deserves it and the public deserves it. And I'll continue to do that as, as long as I financially can. So thank you for having this opportunity to, to let, let our public voice their concerns. Um, they, they really have said some great things about county employees. And I just wanted to say, as a county employee, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. And we appreciate you.
Diane Garcia, Spanish Fork. I too am a county employee. I've worked for the county for fourteen years. And I work in the assessors department. And all of the appraisers that work in our department that travel all throughout this county do so in their own vehicle. They are not given a county vehicle. So their rundown old vehicle that they're crossing their fingers is going to get them to do their job, um, they drive every day. So I wanted that to kind of be made clear because there are a lot of departments in the county that are not given vehicles. And they do have to use their own personal vehicles. So yes, they're, they're given a mileage, but that doesn't account for all the wear and tear. They drive through constructions to do new constructions, they get nails in their tires, they, they have to make repairs that are not compensated for. And so, and, and they also have that stress of, is it going to make it today? Is it gonna, you know, how, how often do I have to replace my vehicle? Um, because I work in the assessors department, I talk to people every single day, in person and on the phone, who ask questions about their taxes. And I don't think I have had one person in fourteen years understand that that total amount on their tax bill is not the county. They think that total is the county and that we're responsible for that total amount. So I point out to them that they get their tax notice every year that has it broken down. I don't know how many people don't look at the actual education that we are providing that by state law, we have to provide. So there is education out there. Most people are not accessing it. So I don't fault the county for, for not educating enough because I literally have to spoon-feed people to understand these things, to read their notices, to look at things. They come in, they yell at us, "You raised our taxes." I point out, they have, I have to explain to them how it's broken up, you know? Everybody gets a little piece of the pie. Utah County gets a very small piece of that pie. I also believe that because of that lack of either attention or education, that's why the NIBO School District bond was passed because they were promised it would not raise their taxes. They did not educate themselves on the fact that next year, they're going to come into Utah County and they're going to be yelling at me because their taxes went up and it will all be the school district. So, um, so I do not fault you for that. Um, they're all voters. They, they vote for that if they're educated voters. Um, that's, remains to be seen. And I also want to, uh, point out a fact that Utah County does not pay, does not charge for people to look up all this information online. Other counties charge. And even some counties don't even have it online. You have to go down in person. We have all this information online. You can look up everything. You can look up your last ten years of exactly how much each entity got of your money, what percent, how much, what your total bill was. You can look and actually see that your values went down a few years ago. A lot of values went down. So that, the information is there and it's free to access. And I admonish everybody to do that and be educated for themselves. Thanks.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be a meeting you attended if you didn't speak to us.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry to say, but I can't stay in the county too much longer. I have to go and work somewhere where I can make a living and support my farm that I could never plant because, and I shouldn't say that because this is Garcia's here. Actually, I have planted it several times.
Just a reminder, we do need your name for the record.
My name is Robert Stevens. Uh, I live in Provo. John Adams said that, uh, remember, democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself. There was never, there never was a, a democracy yet that did not commit suicide. It is in vain. Of ZeroHead, of ZeroHead.com reported in two thousand and fourteen, a list of ninety-seven taxes that Americans pay every year. As, as, as a gentleman had pointed out, there's no difference between fees and taxes. I've seen the news recently, sixty-three percent of Americans don't have enough savings to cover a five-hundred-dollar emergency. You pointed out the average income of a county employee is fifty-eight thousand, but the average starting salary of a B.O.D. graduate is fifty-five thousand. A, a few of us in the county here, or even in America, who work for ourselves, as I do, have a four-on-one, as all the county employees do. And now, I'm not inferring that the county employees are not really hard, sincere workers. I totally believe they are, but I think that the discussion here is completely wrong. You know, a national debt, twenty-one trillion dollars, debt per state, one point, two trillion. A, a local level debt, one point eight trillion. Tax Freedom Day, we work from January first up till April nineteenth just to pay our taxes. That, it is equivalent to twenty-nine point eight percent of the year. Um, I've never seen an elected official say he reduced the number of regulations which resulted in the reduction in the size of government and governmental expenditures. And, and so, I think to the future, I think, well, it's obvious in my mind, maybe not everyone here, that, that, that there will be a societal economic collapse. And what will the discussion be at that? You know? You know, when the eight-point earthquake happens and, and, and twenty percent of the cement, uh, reinforced masonry structures in the county collapse, you know, how many body bags, uh, did you buy up? You know, and so forth. And, and, and so I think that in the future, the discussion is going to be very different. I think that our economy is running out of steam and, um, and, um, just one day- uh, just one day, I, I'd like to go and attend a meeting here. And here you say, we reduced, you know, regulations this year by 5%. We returned the power back to the people. We decided that central planning wasn't such a good idea after all. And, um, and we feel like we are fiscally conservative and, and we hope that you vote for us again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any, it looks like you have some additional public comment?
I do like the mighty red devil Jack O'Mack.
My name is Max Morgan. I'm a resident of Springville. I also work for the sheriff's office. I love working for the sheriff's office and I love serving the citizens of Utah County. I am, I am doing my dream job. And it doesn't pay much, but I love what I do. And like the other gentleman, I would do it for free if I could support my family on it. There's not a day that I don't wake up and enjoy coming to work, even on snowy days and, and days that, or days that, there's things that we see that people would never want to see. My only fear is if we don't do something now, then in a few years, we are going to be forced to increase the tax so much that everyone's going to be up here against it, every single person. I don't like to see my coworkers leave and go to other places. I love where I work. I don't want to leave and go anywhere. It's not my intention to go anywhere. I love Utah County and I love the citizens of Utah County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just take just a second and I, he'll, he's going to be mad at me for saying this. But when I came in, when Commissioner Lee and I first came into office, we came in on the heels of one of the greatest tragedies Utah County ever had and we, we lost a law enforcement officer. I came in and watched all these tears shed for these people with Sheriff Tracy as this county stepped up and did the right thing. Let me tell you the kind of people that you have defending you. And Max, again, I know he, he'd never say this and want it, but these people gave of their time freely and he escorted that widower to all of these events and they made sure and took care of their own because they did it. When we had those fires, they took their own personal trailers and their horses to save as much livestock as they can. These are the great people that I'm so happy to hear. Not one person in here said, "Cut the sheriff's office budget." Take, take, take care of them is what I hear. So thank you because it renewed my hope in Utah County that we do want to do the right thing. And at the same time, cut where it's necessary. Again, I want to thank all of those men and women because they are great. I, I've truly loved them and, and appreciate all of you as well, so.
Okay, is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring the discussion back to the bench for the agenda item number one. I will introduce this and I alluded it to in my original comments. And I again appreciate the commissioners and giving me the opportunity to host the town halls and have the further dialogue. At this point in time, I would, uh, go with the voice of the citizens that I've heard in the majority. And that is to, uh, fully fund, uh, I have a list here. It was last updated on 12/10 that totals to about 82, 8.2 million of items that we've deemed necessary as we've gone through months of budgeting process. The request I've received over and over from the citizens is to fund that, but to do so from our reserves with the anticipation that if the budgeting process and revenue projections do not meet out, that next year they will be here in support of a tax increase. There have been people here this evening that have reflected that. And I am happy to take that prudent action myself this evening, recognizing that we very well could be here again next year, uh, facing something even higher than my proposal of freezing the rate to make sure that we keep our reserves at a healthy number. But I feel confident in the people that I have met with and the dialogues that we have that that, that will be met with understanding. And that's, that's my comment on it.
So I appreciate the opportunity too. Uh, I've been advocating for a tax increase discussion for the last three years. I got in here and said, "No way, we're going to cut, 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 cut." And the more I got into it, I thought, "These guys are doing a good job." Uh, I don't know everything. I still don't know what every department does because I haven't been responsible for every department. Uh, each commissioner takes, uh, individual roles in certain departments. I'm very familiar with the sheriff's office. I spend a lot of time. That's why you find me to be a very passionate person. Not that these two gentlemen aren't, but, uh, I do. Um, I happen to have the opportunity to serve, uh, with the attorney's department for a couple of years and the last couple for the board of health. So I've been with the biggest budget areas and the majority of the people, uh, that are employed by the county. Uh, they are good, hard workers. That's why I feel it's so important to defend them. A couple of things that were said tonight that I'd like to talk about. Um, I don't disagree with what Commissioner Ivy just said or what Commissioner Lee's stance was. I actually, when the very first person that called, uh, when they got their, uh, postcard, called me and said, "Do we need this tax increase?" And I answered them this way. It depends on what kind of county you want. If you want a county, and, and then I followed that up with, "So if you're asking, 'Do I need to raise your taxes right this minute to fund the government effectively?' No, I don't. Okay? But if something were to happen, or depending on what happens, I would be depleting those savings. The question is, do you want to go for a larger increase in the future or do we want to maintain?" I said, "That's the question before the people." I agree with Commissioner Ivy. Uh, I hear everybody saying, "We know that trouble may come and we'll, we'll be with you and we want our county to be protected, but let's hold off right now on the rate." I do, I, I actually still think it'd be prudent to hold that because although I do, uh, feel for that, I actually believe there's another measure that I'm in full support that I know most of the people aren't in here, even though in your comments against property taxes, you've come up and said, "I've damaged my car to roads, I need better roads." I am so in favor of that quarter cent because your cities are hurting for money and I do think the fee is inappropriate and this holds them accountable. Also enacting that puts a million dollars plus back into the general fund and we can go longer with those things on a, on a user tax. That's why I like user tax. If you ever ask me my personal opinion on property taxes, I promise you, I'm as staunch constitutionalist as most of you and I think they're illegal. I just do. But nobody asked me for that. Couple other things that were said. Taxpayer wasted money. If you're an Orem resident, if, wow. If you are a resident of Orem or Provo, to me, you have the biggest right to be offended more so than anybody. And I'm not talking about University Place or any of these things. A couple of people in here has asked this commission to stand up to the state and stand up. Okay? I, I'm here to tell you, that's another failure on this commission. Not that we didn't, that we haven't adequately informed you that we have. These two more so than I have fought way harder or more diligently based on the conversations I hear in doing just that. Every time we go to the state and sometimes they stick it to us and sometimes mayors and people are going behind our back and saying, "No, that's just not true." And, and they're not telling the truth. We have fought, uh, Mr. Stevens, wherever Robert went. This commission actually did go and get law changed. And it's something I wasn't really aware of until our staff brought it and said, "We're going to have to expend so much taxpayer money because there is a 20-year renewal coming on all of your..." I almost just called it green belt. Oh my gosh. Yeah, it's not green belt. Ag protection, thank you. And these two commissioners led the charge on getting that ag protection. One word in the law changed to save us all a lot of time and a lot of money so that we could continue to do that. It's hard to quantify those dollars, but it's a lot. And it's important. So they should be commended particularly, especially on that item because I definitely didn't lead the charge. I was 100% supportive, but they definitely led the charge on that. Let, getting back to Orem and Provo, some of you said, "Stand up to the state." Commissioner Lee, I will give him all the credit. He has wanted to stand up to everybody. He, he really has. And I commend him because that is his belief. I haven't disagreed with him. I just have felt like I've had to take a different action at times. And this is why, when I cast a vote for BRT, that was the hardest vote I've ever cast. I think UTA has a lot of problems, but there was a contract entered into before I did and I felt I had to get there. It doesn't change my stance on UTA. Commissioner Lee wanted to fight that. I, I told him right to his face, "I agree." And I think that's important for you to say because you represent a good chunk of this county by doing that and explain to him why I had to do what I felt I had to do. Hardest vote I've had to make. Okay? The other one is, then we have an election official who then goes to protect you all to make sure that the Provo and Orem don't violate the law and that we have a fair election. We find a small and minor violation in the law where they used county, or excuse me, city resources and they got fined a whole $250. $250 and I won't tell you the salaries of what these people make, but you can find it on Utah's Right to Know. It's pretty accurate. Okay? And that $250 fine for each city has ended up, and I can't even tell you the cost because they're not done. Our election official, Commissioner Lee and myself are being sued with taxpayer money, with taxpayer money having to defend because we stood up for what was right. That's the hypocrisy and the problem that's going on in this county that we need to do, be more engaged in the man of our cities. When Mayor Kafusi came in, I love Mayor Kafusi. She came in and, and, uh, her staff told her, "No, this is an important fight. You have to do it for this reason." And she wanted to listen and support her staff. And so here we are still embroiled in this mess going to the Supreme Court for Commissioner Lee and myself voting for something, by the way, in state law that helped give them the constitutional right for, uh, right to be heard. That's what we're being sued over because we defended due process. You want to talk about an abhorrent waste of taxpayer money? That's it to me. Another one, I see Ben Stanley sitting there. Ben and I have a long history. He, uh, just so you know, he was my wife's AP on this mission. We've known, like, we, we have a long history together. Okay? Ben is one of the two nominees put forward by this commission. Regardless of what my feelings may or may not be or votes, Governor Herbert is wasting taxpayer money by not supporting our taxpayers in giving us representation on there. And we had to go ahead and fight for you to have representation with the taxation money that's been given to them. And so we are wasting taxpayer money. So when we talk about this at every level, I assure you, this commission, and that's why I have the trust in these guys. I, I would tell you honestly, 95, 98% of everything that they've done, I've been supportive, behind or in front, leading with them. Because I do, yeah, we have disagreements, but I do have that respect for them. Um, another thing that's important to me to let you all know, the money that gets turned back every year in the budget, that assigned fund balance is an important number because the commission can't ever tell you and give you a right number because we don't know the right number and it's frustrating to you guys. By the way, the majority of that number that's turned back is, is turned back in employee wages. And that's important for you to understand. When you hear the sheriff's department or the, or people saying, "We're losing people, we can't keep them." When they can't fill a position, we don't allow them to take that money and just spend it on something else. We hold it in that account for that staffing plan. That's how that money gets turned back in. So when you hear us say, "We budgeted the $7 million of assigned fund balance," that's because the process that commissioners talked about, we voted and thought that was the money needed to supply the necessary services to the county. And then the money that gets turned back is because we couldn't provide those at the same level because of the staffing plan we actually had done. Uh, there was one other thing. The appraisers that was talked about, by the way, except for the supervisor, not one of those appraisers, even though they have education and a long history, don't even come close to making the median income. And I think that's it for me. Uh, again, I'm glad to have served with these guys. Thank you for coming and, and letting us know and your department heads so that they can hear how and what you guys would like. Uh, I do think, I will tell you, I do think that we do need a slight tax increase just to keep there. But I'm more than happy to vote and support with these guys because you guys have always shown up to tell us what you think. And I hope and pray with all of you that we don't have an emergency. Because if we do, I will tell you, we need more than holding the rate. Uh, the sheriff's department has done such a great job, but we aren't prepared. Heaven forbid if we have a school shooting because our bomb, bomb robot track doesn't work anymore and those things are a pain to repair and a pain to buy, but they cost a million dollars. And it's a million dollars we may never spend. It's a, it's a racket. But at the same time, if we need it, we're all going to wish we had them. I hope, I hope I'm wrong. I really do. But in this ever-changing world, I don't think I am.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like...
No, that's the practice number two.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, this is, uh, will be to adopt our tax rate.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we do not increase the, the, uh, the, the tax rate and we, um, leave it where it's at, or I guess that's not...
Adopt a certified rate?
And we, and we, uh, yeah, we do not, I'll just leave it that way. We do not raise the tax rate.
Um, with the comments from Commissioner Ivy, uh, where he is willing to support the 8.2 million dollars in, in funding, I gladly second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Uh, to not increase the authorized collection rate for Utah County, but to remain it at the certified rate issued by the state. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry 3-0. We'll now move to adopt a resolution approving the 2019 budget for the general fund and other budgetary funds of Utah County. For general public information purposes, our total budget for the 2019 year on preliminary is set at $90,184,452. Having gone through a budgetary process at length with our elected officials and department heads in looking at the additional asks above that tentative budget, uh, we did go through an extensive process, uh, that started very high in that number and we, through a selection committee, came down with a spreadsheet that left us with, with an additional ask, uh, including a call for employees of 8,209,508,000. As the chair, my suggestion and, and my desire would be to, uh, adopt our budget, including those additional expenses. The question I would have, there is 1.1 million in the attorney's department. I would question if we should go ahead and hold that into a reserve account so that the incoming county attorney can distribute that by line item as they would like to see fit. Uh, the other line items, I feel have been thoroughly reviewed and I would actually support implementing as listed in the spreadsheet. At this point, I would have further discussion on this as a commission chair before opening it to general public comment.
My only question is, because I don't have yours, I mean, I have, I've had that spreadsheet. Uh, does that include 1.3 million for public defenders? Or what's the amount we did on that? Okay.
Yes, that includes the 1.3 for public defenders.
I would actually like to take that then even further. On the attorneys, I fully support restricting that and would like to restrict the amount for the public defenders because I still believe there's a little more work that we may want to, to do. So I'm okay with both of those amounts.
I am fine with the, uh, the tentative budget of, of 90, 90, $1084,452. In, in, uh, addition to that, I do see a need for $2.7 million that we should put in restricted funding for potential wage increases or wage adjustments. And I also see a $1 million needed, uh, in, to put in restricted funding for other, for other projects. That would, that would put the total that I'm, I'm looking at at a 93.7, uh, million dollar budget for a year and that's, that's where I'd like to see it.
Okay. At this point in time, we've had our general statements. I would open it for public comment on the adoption of the general 2019 budget. Seeing no public, I will close the public comment and bring it back up to the board for additional discussion. Uh, obviously, there's a bit of an impasse there with the, the numbers. Uh, I, I feel very comfortable that the asks that have come to us are indeed much needed. Uh, and that's why I am comfortable funding them. That's why I went through this truth and taxation process. Uh, and, and I would fully support funding, funding to that level.
When, in, in going through there, um, in going through this, this spreadsheet that, that we have, um, there's, there is, there is numbers in here that, uh, don't quite add up from what we have in the tentative budget. There are some in here that should be in the operating budget already. Uh, items number eight through 15 should already be in the, uh, the, the tentative budget.
What are those, what are, what are those specific items?
Uh, school, nurse conference stuff, as director, welcome baby conference, the nurse directors conference. All I'm saying is that they're already, they're already, you know, uh, should already be in their, in their, in their budget. Should be in their operating budget. The, the wage, the wage adjustment, I have it at $2.7 million. And I think that we should restrict, restrict the, uh, number two, which is the, the domestic violence court trauma. Let's see, yeah, the, the 36 for, uh, restrict that. There is...
Why restrict domestic violence court since the commission's overseeing that?
Well, we just put it in there so that we can, usually we put restricted in there so that when we can get resuit seats and so forth that comes through.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, the commission's already in charge of that. Normally restrict so that the commission's involved. Isn't the commission still...
Well, I mean, you're right. It's, it's already kind of a restricted. And I'll, I'll, you know, and I'd like to put in, into, in the restricted like we did last year. Uh, we have, well, I want to... Uh, we have, well, let me read it this way. So the numbers per the email from the sheriff's office, um, eleven, twenty, twenty eighteen. Reclassifying the following expenses, revenues from the general fund to the outside project funds for, for numbers, uh, two forty-eight. Uh, it's the DUI overtime, the seatbelt overtime, forest service overtime, AF Canyon overtime. Contracts, payrolls related to expenses, major crime task force overtime and out of county fire crews overtime. That was, that was a request. Um, to do a reclassification there. And, and then I think there should be some minor adjustments in the internal service fund leases. And then also a reclassification of budgets for building projects like we did last year. We have, uh, additional, uh, budget requests for the courthouse twenty, uh, twenty-six hundred projects. Which I, I think should be, should be in a restricted account. So that when we get, uh, bids on those, that we can do that security center, the twenty-six hundred project, this is for carpets. This is for boilers, this is for cameras.
That's in public works.
Yeah, that, that should be in a restricted, restricted so that we can go through the process like we did again.
So do you have a total for the public works restricted?
Uh, this one for the security center is, the total is five hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred. That was, that was the request. The, the one for the courthouse is two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred. There's one for.
But which courthouse? The new one or the historic?
No, 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 this is the, this is.
The historical from public courts.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Um, but that one, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the one they won out of TRCC?
Uh, yes, but I think what we usually do on that is we restrict it so that it's restricted to when they, when they do bids or contracts, then we release the funds.
Okay.
That's the, that's, that was the intent this last year with it.
Uh, because that amount's not in the general fund. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. It's not in that ninety-eight million.
Right. Um, the work release jail industry is a seven, seventy-four twenty account. Um, six thousand dollars for laundry equipment. Again, we typically, we don't know exactly what that is until a bid comes through. Uh, foothills, the twenty-six hundred project for four thousand dollars for a parking lot. Uh, last done in twenty fifteen. Health and justice, twenty-six hundred project has a total of a hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Um, dollars and, um, and it's going to be for painting, carpets, so forth. Same process that we've, we did this last year. Bay doors, um, oh, sorry, motor pool, twenty-six hundred project. Uh, has bay door, swamp pool or so forth. Again, it should come in through a bid process or through a invoice process. Resurfacing of, uh, parking lot, this is Spanish fork fuel station, twenty-six hundred project. Mountainland Health Services, twenty-six hundred project. Um, building control updates, generator fuels and so forth. Oh, sorry, that was fifty-two thousand, five hundred. Public Works Building, two, twenty-six hundred projects. A lot of these are just the same ones we did last year in, in the restricted.
Well, so here's my question. The public works director answers to us. Why don't we just tell him? Your whole budget, in essence, it's approved, but nothing, we want, we don't want any of these projects done rather than going through and restricting line by line because. What I've noticed is sometimes they can move stuff around anyway.
Right, I know. And so I, I, I just think if we, if we designate it through our budget process, it'd be easier for. The mean or the accounting to be able to say that's, that's what we had. Last year, we just did a blanket.
On, on, I know, on one total account, the whole twenty-six hundred?
Twenty-six hundred project minister, well, no, it's twenty-six hundred public works building, twenty-six hundred for the administration building, twenty-six hundred for the emissions building. All the buildings that we have.
Right, all the twenty-six hundred.
All the twenty-six hundred buildings.
So that Danine would know in preparation.
So that she know.
Okay, so the twenty-six hundred account would be.
Yeah, that, that's easy enough.
And that takes, that takes the rest of them if you want no numbers on them.
No, I don't think we need the numbers.
And I don't have any problem restricting those at all.
The, uh, I, I think with, with the, uh, the, the impasse of numbers, because I think I'm at, I'm at ninety. Um. Ninety-three point seven. In the way of looking down through the, uh, the, the projects that are, that are on there. There are a few, a few projects that we probably should, should clarify where they're coming out. There, there might be some doubling up of, of, uh, numbers that are in there. Um, from the asks to what we actually have in the tentative budget. I've seen, I've seen a little bit of that that I have to point out.
So, so I have a few of those that have been highlighted, like the transport van for juvenile inmates, tactical vests. Four-on-one car radios that have already been withdrawn from the, from the, from the number of eight point two.
Well.
Are those the ones you referenced?
And the other thing is, is keep in mind, we're only passing this to give our budget officer a chance to prepare it. We still will have another bite of the apple next week to pull these numbers and make sure if we need to make changes. Correct, Brian?
Well, as far as you're seeing another opportunity.
Yeah, so.
You're referring to the twenty eighteen budget where.
No, 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 I'm talking about after we pass this tonight, she'll still prepare. No, I'm sorry, that is twenty eighteen, but we do next week. I'm sorry.
Yeah, next week's, making the final adjustments for twenty eighteen. And at that time, uh, as a reminder, if there are things that.
We need to carry over.
That were requested in the twenty nineteen budget, that people have been able to, uh, purchase in twenty eighteen, then those things would not need to go on the. Twenty nineteen budget.
That's right. You got that backwards.
So I'll make a suggest, if I can, Mr. Chair, make a suggestion. Um, and, and just for the public's information on this. We, we don't get a chance to go through and talk about these numbers on an individual basis with each other. So this is the first time that I get to hear what this commissioner thinks and what that commissioner thinks on it. And they get to think, and they get to hear what I think about it. So now, now that I, now that I know this, it's, it's a little bit fuzzy for us. Because I think sometimes we may be talking about the same stuff or talking past each other. So I would recommend now that we have the numbers from each other, that it might be a good idea for us to, uh, you know, to take, to take a week so we can work down through them.
The only other question I have is if it would be simpler, and part of it is because we are going into a larger amount of money here. Uh, and recognizing that needs could potentially change. We have had significant shifts in our elected officials. Uh, we have a new sheriff. We have an incoming new clerk. Uh, I would be comfortable if we maybe identified a couple of the items that are lined item out currently that we are perfectly fine funding. With putting the remainder amount of that in a restricted fund that they could then bring to us for their identified line items. As we move into the twenty-nine budget year, twenty nineteen budget year. If that would be a simpler process, that way they could make the adjustments in their line item and then simply bring that request to us.
Mr. Chairman, one of the other options too, uh, it's something that I noticed over the past few months that you as a commission. Have kind of adopted the attitude is that if there are needs that are identified as we move forward. That then you would appropriately address those needs through a budget opening. So one of the options you have. Is, uh, to definitely, uh, keep track of these things. You do have, um, four brand-new individuals coming in. And then of course Commissioner Lee, uh, uh, being re-elected. And, uh, maybe addressing those issues with the new elected officials. And as a new commit, Board of Commissioners in the next year, because you do have that option. To do that at that time. And then you can look at, uh, everything that's available and really, uh, do some scrutiny. On, uh, stuff. But that's just one of the options.
I would agree with, you know, what you're saying there. I just think with it, again, with us being able, the first time being able to talk, it's really hard with a budget like this to. Now get our minds around it and we're, we're not even talking off the same spreadsheet, so.
Well, I did work mine off of that exact same spreadsheet because I grabbed that from the assessor today.
And that would be my, my thought on if we simply put it into restricted, it gives us actually even a longer timeframe to work through those things. As the needs arise without going through the, the hassle and the public notice and stuff of opening the budget because we've identified.
So what would that be? Would that be that we, that we adopt the tentative budget and we put the rest of it in restricted?
That's not going to be my motion.
Well, I, I would, I would recommend we find a number that we would put in restricted. For example, if we've identified several areas in the sheriffs, uh, the attorneys, I'm fine putting in restricted.
I'll tell you what my number would be. And I, and I don't have Commissioner Lee's numbers on the, all the twenty-six hundred accounts. I'm okay with giving Danine that carte blanche on that number, right? But I have identified based on all of the budget requests, uh, three point six million dollars of additional asking. And again, that includes the one point three for the public defenders. Uh, three point, actually, three million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars to be exact in certain, in different departments. That I would be comfortable restricting within that ninety-eight million dollars. Uh, the reason I don't want to do the one point nine, the one million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand and ninety-four, uh, dollars. Is because those were identified as contracts or renewals of contracts or state mandated contracts. That's where that amount came from. Uh, in the assessing and collecting, it was two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. Uh, that again, if you want to put in restricted, that's fine, but the nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars in that fund. Uh, of additional requests. Uh, I'm definitely not in favor of restricting anything that goes to the cola. Uh, I think we've already hurt the, uh, employees. Uh, when we restricted and kind of.
And, and I'm fine fully funding that.
You know, I, I want to have a, a conversation. We've had this discussion in the past and I wanted to bring it to the commission just for a talk. On, and the reason why I call it wage, wage increases or wage adjustments. Is, is because there is, there is quite a disparity between a, a cola that is giving, is given across the board. So, and, and by law, you have to give a cola across the board. Where if we, if we fund it as a wage, uh, adjustment, we can, we can talk, not that we wouldn't do it, but how we implement it might be different. Because those that are on the bottom end, those that are down in the twenty and the thirty thousand dollar range of, of, of wages. Uh, they get twenty bucks in their, in their, in their, in their pocket. Where those that are on the top end, on a cola basis, they get, uh, uh, they get a, a bigger percentage because we do it off of a wage. So the last time I proposed this, we, uh, we, we would look at it on a fifty, you know, fifty thousand dollars a year and, and, and lower. Actually on a wage adjustment gets a higher percentage than those that are on the upper end. To, to see if we can give that group of people a little bit more in their, in their pocket. And so I would like to at least have that discussion. If we put, if we designate it as a cola. Then, uh, we can't have that discussion, but if we put it as a wage adjustment, ju- adjustment, then we can at least have those discussions.
So the reason I don't support you on that is the wage adjustment happens every three years when we do a salary study. And we had that salary study and we adjusted those wages. Colas. And it's important, and, and I agree, I'm, I'm like the rest of public. They hear colas and they think, oh, government padding employees' wages again. And it always had, it, I, I contend that I believe that it's always just been, oh, two percent, and they just raise and they raise and they raise. That's not what we did in this case. We, we know because we went through and we had him pull all the data and analyze where it was. And it's actually still at a conservative and our cola increase is below the social security increase. And even they calculated three point eight and they said two point eight. Cola is not a wage increase. Colas are meant literally and all employers should do them because it's supposed to keep your current wage. Being able to fund and take care of your family based on current expenses because milk goes up for everybody. Doesn't matter if you make fifty thousand, five thousand or five hundred thousand. That's why I, I don't support that. So. Uh, for me, I'm, like I say, I'm, I'm more than comfortable, uh, restricting a lot of those things, but, uh, moving forward tonight.
With, with the, in regards to that, I actually agree with that. I think we did the salary study, which is where we do the wage adjustment. A cola is simply to keep purchasing power the same based on your current salary. And, and that gives everybody that same purchasing power across the board to remain the same.
I, I, and I, I'm not discounting that. I just wanted to have that conversation because.
Oh, that's fair.
I, I do, I do see, uh, for instance, a, an, an employee that makes thirty thousand dollars a year here. Their, their benefits, uh, almost equal what they are making and their take-home pay, uh, is in, in some cases. You know, although I'm, I'm saying that we, we do the market study and that is the range they're in and I can't dis- discount that. I'm trying to find a way for those employees who are on the lower end of the scale. Um, who, who are, who are struggling to find, to find a way to, you know, to actually give them a little bit more. And that's, that's my intent is, is to do that, which, which in a, which in a cola by law, we can't. And we will have an, an adjustment, you know, uh, with a, with a market study that will be up and coming again.
It's coming again.
And so, um, I, I was just trying to find a way there. If there's not support for that with the commission, I understand. I just want to make sure and bring that up.
And I think it's a valid point, but I feel like they, they should be separated with the cola implemented.
And, and to be fair, I have always let all the employees know that's been your stance and how supportive you have been for those employees because I think that does get missed. Um, for example, one of the point, ones I pointed out, the appraisers. I'm as frustrated as anybody. We can't keep appraisers. We can't get appraisers in this county because we don't even pay them a, a livable wage. And they perform an essential function that, uh, in the salary studies, even though you argue, uh, they ignore data from, sometimes from people and, and it happens. And so the commission has taken action and hopefully they continue to do so in the future, so.
So the other ask I'd have is, you know, and we've, we've traditionally given this to commissioners if, if this ask comes in. With the amount of information that we have. I, I would ask that now that, now that I can get that information from you. That, that we would, we would postpone this for one week and, and finalize our twenty eighteen budget. And do our twenty nineteen budget in our commission meeting on, uh, next Tuesday. So that, so that I can feel comfortable in looking at the numbers and knowing where the numbers are at because it's really fuzzy right now where everything's at.
Well, I thought we already continued this for a week. So for me, uh, again, I, I mean. If Commissioner Ivy's willing to support you, I'd rather just move on it tonight. All these people came for a tax hearing and a budget hearing. And to me, I think that's part of the frustration.
Pretty much a tax hearing. I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the commission.
Yeah, but last week when they all came, they said, well, we don't even know the budget. So again, when they have the opportunity to have this. But, but I, I would normally back you on that except for we have already continued this item for one week.
Oh, and, and.
And we've been doing budgets since August.
Yeah, and.
We don't know all the numbers. I don't know all the numbers that you're talking about for sure. And so it's, it's fuzzy.
And that's, it was afforded to me last week, uh, the opportunity, uh, even though there were people ready to move. So I would feel unjust in not supporting that, even though I am ready to take action this evening. So I would be supportive of making, we have to do it Tuesday because Tuesday's our day.
We do.
Okay, so let, let's do this. Can we pass a budget? Or I, I guess I'm at more asking legal and the budget officer. Without passing the budget, can we pass and implement, uh, right now, the two point seven percent cola for next year to be part of the budget?
We're going to do a three-four.
A three point four percent. I meant two point seven million. Thank you.
Yeah, two point seven million, three point four is, I think, what it was.
As the percentage, correct.
Is that possible to do?
Well, I think, why can't we signal that? If, if, again, I don't think there's any, one of us that is discounting that.
Right, I think we're all in favor of that.
We're on the record for it.
Well, we were on the record for back pay and the employees don't trust us on that because they didn't get it. So.
That, yeah, that needs to be a part of the budget.
Okay, that, that was just my.
There's no reason why, I mean, we signaled with kind of.
Sure.
An open meeting where we're at with that. Okay. I'll make, I'll make a motion if it's all right, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Make a motion that we continue this item till, uh, Tuesday, the eighteenth. At, uh, nine AM on our regular commission meeting.
Obviously it's not going to matter, so I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for continuance of this item until our Tuesday meeting to be held at nine o'clock at this location. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion will carry two, one.
And then, and since we've had this discussion, any of the information you want from me, I'll be glad to photocopy it and get it to you.
And we'll make sure you have this. So at this point in time, we, uh, actually will consider one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will carry three, zero. Thank you for your attendance this evening.